I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes, here. Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Great. Are there any additions to this evening's agenda? Hearing none. Is there a staff report this evening? Okay, I believe we have none. Let's move on to approval of minutes of the previous meeting. We have the March 27 minutes and a corrected copy was on our desk. Is there a motion or any corrections to those minutes?
I'd like to move to approve them.
Okay.
I'd second that motion.
A motion by Lynn and a second by Dennis. Any changes? Hearing none. Would all those in favor of approval please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We have public input next this evening. We have three different people so far that have passed in one of these yellow forms to speak. If you haven't filled one out yet, they're on the table at the back and everybody can have a chance to give input to the committee tonight. Let's see, I'll take them in the order I got them actually. First, we have Kristi Nugent. You could come up and have a seat at the table and say your name and address. I'm sorry, you said you would like to speak at the time of the agenda item. Okay. I apologize. People can either choose to speak now or at the time of the agenda item that they're here to speak about. Actually, everybody so far has asked to speak at the time of the agenda item with the exception of Roy Williams. Mr. Williams, did you want to speak now or wait until the time of the agenda item?
I'll speak now.
Now? Okay. Feel free to come on up here and have a seat. There's a little microphone on the table you can speak into and say your name and address for us this evening. Yep, go right ahead, Mr. Williams. Tell us your name and address and you have five minutes to address the committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, other council members. I'm here specifically this morning. I talked to a Urbana city worker concerning construction that was going on in my neighborhood, building sidewalks, in this case sidewalks, curb and gutter. And I was concerned about a pile of bricks that I saw in the construction area on another corner. I asked him if I could have the bricks and he explained to me that the policy of the city is to give those bricks to the property owner from where they removed the bricks from the sidewalk to put concrete. I mentioned to him that the sidewalk doesn't belong to the property owner, it belongs to us, meaning the city. But he said that was their policy, if the people who, the property owner didn't want it, then the construction company would give it to Packer and they would sell it for a quarter a brick. My concerns is that these bricks are located at 1202 West Hill Street, which I believe is the property of the, one of the aldermen's on the council. In fact, the alderman from my district. I believe it, at least from my standpoint, inappropriate that, that the council members receive gratuities during their services from various contractors or anybody else. I don't think those bricks should go to that property owner there because I think he, because he's a city council member, he has to waive his right to receive these bricks. That was my initial commentary. My second commentary relate to, again, the streets. I noticed that in my neighborhood, second year in a row, that the workers all tend to be white on the construction project. I say that advisedly because this morning there was a black guy out there and I called him a laborer. He quickly informed me that he was a concrete finisher. I, of course, seen the form in his hand. I knew what he did. I had some familiarity with that kind of work. I still am not satisfied that there's a legitimate effort, but even though the city employee explained to me your policies of ensuring that your contractors are proper, properly guided by your affirmative action policies or your diversity policies that blacks are included on opportunities for these kinds of situations. And I haven't seen it in two years. Last year was the city of Urbana's staff itself doing that kind of all white in my neighborhood. And I, you know, just to show how observant I am, this morning, the worker, there was a woman for the first time, a white woman, but a woman in that crew for Ducey. Ducey is a contractor over there. I'm just hoping that, that the city can be a little bit more observant of what's going on and that it can concern itself with seeing that, especially my concern for the young blacks, that they given some opportunities to work, that we not continue to make promises without the real intention to go forward on things. Appreciate very much this opportunity you gave me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the next. Everybody so far has filled out that they would like to speak at a certain agenda item. We have two more brief general announcements. One is that I was asked to announce that State Representative Naomi Jacobson will be having a town hall meeting here at the Urbana City Council chambers this Thursday, April 12th at 6:00 PM. And last, we had Robert Myers from the City of Urbana with a quick announcement. Is Robert here?
Hi, my name is Robert Myers and I'm the planning manager of the City of Urbana. This will probably be the only time you'll see me speak on this side of the table. But I'd like to ask if all the managers could come up, please, from the community development department that are here tonight. I'm sorry, I had to sit down so I can be heard in the microphone. As managers of the community development department, we're here tonight to honor our director, Dr. Libby Tyler. For an important professional achievement. City planning's professional organization is the American Planning Association, which has about 36,000 members. And among a slate of national candidates, Dr. Tyler was recently elected Chair of the Planning and Women Division of the American Planning Association. Wow. For nearly... And for nearly 30 years, the division has provided platform for ideas of particular interest to women in the profession and across all regions and specialties. So with that, I want to say thank you and congratulations and also we have this provide you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Surprised.
That was the point.
Okay, our first item of business this evening is a presentation by Carl Foundation Hospital. There are actually three people who asked to speak before the item, so the way we typically would do this is let the public speak first and then we'll have the Carl representatives come forward and speak and then there'll be a chance for council questions or discussion.
Mr. Kierman?
Yes.
Since I'm an employee of Carl Foundation Hospital, I will recuse myself from the discussion and any Q and A, okay?
Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
The three people that have spoken, I think I've got you in the order, you filled the slips out. First, I have Jeff and Michael Cunningham of 801 North Kohler who asked to speak. Jeff and Michael, if you could come forward and then the next person who's on deck would be Catherine Connor will be next. Jeff and Michael, if you could state your name and address for the record and you have five minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Cunningham. This is my son, Michael. We live at 801 North Kohler Avenue, two blocks north of Carl. I'm here tonight to comment on their planned expansion in our neighborhood. In Carl's plans, we will have a 120-car parking lot just outside the south side of our house. Our family would not be living in our house today if it wasn't for Carl. We purchased the property for them in 1996 when the city council created the first medical institutional campus and Carl agreed to sell back 12 properties to private owners and not expand further into their neighborhood. Since 1996, Carl has invested thousands of dollars in their rental properties in our neighborhood to bring them up to city building codes. Carl's leasing agent, Devonshire Realty, has worked very hard since 2005 to improve the screening of the tenants on our request for their rental houses, which has further improved the neighborhood. Carl provides excellent medical care and jobs to residents of central Illinois. I was glad to live near Carl recently when I could not make it to the Provena Covenant Emergency Room and to walk the two blocks to Carl where I received prompt and excellent medical care. And before tonight's meeting, Carl has held two meetings with the neighborhood to inform us and seek input in this expansion process. The concern I bring to the city council tonight is about light pollution and the effect on our neighborhood environment when two large parking lots are built just feet outside our doors. Light pollution is a serious problem throughout the world, but especially in the United States where cheap electric rates, or so they were last year, make it economical for builders to put up lights that not only illuminate their target, but throw unwanted glare into the night sky and throughout the neighborhood. Presently, pole lights in Carl's doctor's parking lot between church and park streets light not only the parking lot, but the second story of my house, causing us to close the blinds in our bedroom window. Carl's plans show a 15-foot landscaping buffer from our property line to where the asphalt begins. When I went to view Carl's most recent construction, the Spine Institute on Lincoln Avenue, I saw a buffer that consists mainly of bluegrass, a few scattered trees, and some small landscape plantings. After the recent snowstorm in February, in loaders and pickup trucks worked throughout the night in Carl's parking lots at the Champaign County Fairgrounds to remove piles of snow left from plowing operations. The beep, beep, beep when the vehicles were in reverse was audible over a block away through our closed bedroom windows. During Carl's last meeting to discuss their expansion plans with the neighborhood, I heard a planner from their long-range planning consultants describe how the materials and design of the interior of this new building would be built with the health and healing of Carl's patients foremost in mind. As the city begins the approval process for this $120 million building, I challenge Carl and the city council as representatives of its citizens to consider the health of this neighborhood by spending a tiny fraction of that $120 million on designing and building parking lots that don't pollute the neighborhood with light and creating landscaping that screens the neighborhood, screens the neighbors, and adds to the landscape environment of Urbana instead of degrades it. I don't consider myself superstitious, but I do find it a little bit hopeful that on the agenda tonight, right after Carl's presentation, the council will consider items on green building and sustainable Urbana. Thank you for your time and consideration of the request.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jeff or Michael? None? Thank you very much. Next, we have Catherine Connor and the person on deck after that is John Bambinek. Catherine Connor, if you could come up and state your name and address, you have five minutes.
All right. I am Catherine Connor. I live at 302 North Orchard in Urbana, which is in the shadow of the South clinic of Carl. I also own a home at 1012 North Ducey, which is north of Carl, slightly north of the expansion neighborhood. Some of the things I am going to say here are because I have been at both of the neighborhood meetings, so I know some of the plans. I'm not sure how much is there. I'm definitely not here to oppose Carl expansion. I think such expansion is beneficial to our community. I am here, however, to oppose the closing of Kohler Street. The closing of the other streets in the proposal are not so detrimental, but I do believe that closing Kohler would be detrimental to the entire community due to traffic concerns. Those of us in the neighborhood and many others in town have found Kohler to be the answer to the question, how do we avoid University Avenue? University Avenue is at capacity. The city says so, Carl representatives say so, the traffic study people say so. Closing Kohler would divert traffic onto University and considerable traffic. This will put University over capacity. It seems funny to think that Kohler traffic would go to University when one goes north and south and the other goes west, but because between Lincoln Avenue and Broadway, there is only one street that crosses University Avenue and continues for more than one block north and that street is Kohler. Closing Kohler would remove that street. I use Kohler when I go to the interstate, something I do several times a week at times of the year. Closing Kohler would mean I would need to use University going west, encountering the intersection at Lincoln and University. I use Kohler when I'm going to Cunningham Road. It's good to go around the country club. It avoids University. The alternative requires that I use University going east. And the town is growing to the north, so there will be more traffic created from the north and more traffic to deal with coming down Lincoln, which is also going to be, I think, a problem. Some of that traffic now uses Kohler and more wood. I have attended the two neighborhood meetings held by Carl. I congratulate them for holding such meetings. I was surprised that the traffic study presented at the last meeting did not match my driving experience on Lincoln. In the traffic on Lincoln, heading north through the university intersection during rush hour sometimes backs up several blocks. I have seen it as far as Springfield Avenue, which is four blocks. Kohler relieves some of this traffic now. That would be a greater problem if Kohler were closed. At the first neighborhood meeting, when they asked for suggestions, I strongly encouraged Carl planners to find a way to avoid closing Kohler. At the second meeting, the proposal was to close Kohler. The answer to my asking why they did not plan to build over Kohler, and I hope I represent Carl's position accurately, the answer was this. The ICU units are on the second floor of the building we are attaching to and therefore the operating rooms need to be built on that same floor, the second floor. They said they could not build over Kohler because in order to build over, they must build at the third floor level. And they can't put their operating units on the third floor because the ICU units are on the second floor. I'm sure they will correct me if that is not what I heard, but I believe it is. I wonder if there can't be a compromise? If it is really inviolable that the operating rooms must be on the same floor as the ICU units? And they can't put the operating rooms on the third floor? If that is an absolute essential? Then is it possible to build over Kohler at a level that would not allow trucks? I'm sure the requirement for the third floor level is because of trucks. Almost all traffic on Kohler that avoids University and Lincoln is car traffic. Could Carl's need to have the ICUs and operating rooms on the same floor and be satisfied and also allow car traffic, but not truck traffic, to pass on Kohler? I hope you will consider carefully what closing Kohler would do. I was here addressing this council with different members on it many years ago when Carl proposed closing Park Street. Many objections to that closing were from neighbors whose mobility out of the neighborhood would have been affected and a good solution was found with Park Street with a diversion, a little bit of the park taken, the diversion around to Orchard, the signal at Fairview and Lincoln. That was a good solution. I hope there can be such a useful solution to the problem and that exists with closing Kohler and the Kohler will remain open to public traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Our last speaker on this topic, public speaker, is John Bambinek. Come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Bambinek. I live actually in Champaign at 715 Aaron, but I wanted to talk about an experience I had at Carl Foundation Hospital, which is in Urbana and hence your jurisdiction. On January 8th of this year, my wife, by C-section, gave birth to our first son, Michael, at 10 pounds, eight ounces at Carl. It was a very happy day for us, of course, because we'd been trying to have a child for five-ish years, give or take. Our experience at Carl was less than pleasant and at times nursing staff was overtly hostile to us. It's not really my intent to really talk about bad bedside manner because that's, can be dealt with a variety of ways. But it got bad, you know, at one point before she was discharged, I thought about calling an ambulance to have her transferred to Provena despite the fact she really needed to stay in bed. When we finally got discharged, or when she got discharged, I was obviously not admitted as a patient. The child's, Michael's, first pediatric appointment was Friday morning. My wife was still tired and didn't want to make that trip and wanted to reschedule for the afternoon. The nurse told her no. At which point I got on the phone saying, "I'm arranging for pediatric care someplace else because I'm tired of this." I repeated myself and that nurse said, "If you do not bring this child to Carl, right now, we're calling DCFS." I informed her that my understanding of such a threat constituted a crime of extortion. I immediately wrote a letter, went down there, recorded the conversation. I had her with her, you know, with consent, of course. Asked that this letter be put into the chart, says, "I don't want you calling me. I don't want you extorting me or my wife. The child is being taken someplace else for care because obviously this is, you know, I'm not going to tolerate threats like this." They obviously did not put that in the chart because about three to four hours later, we got another call from Carl, this time from a social worker, repeating the same threat. My hope in bringing this in front of this council is that, you know, Carl is obviously within your jurisdiction. And for a hospital to so breach medical ethics, to start threatening people with DCFS under really frivolous circumstances is beyond the pale and cannot happen. I could let this go, but it is my impression that if it happened to me, it happened to someplace, to some other people. And asking around anecdotally, I found out that it has. It is my hope that as Carl comes to you for plans of expansion, that you come to them saying that this problem cannot happen. I really don't think Carl Hospital's a matter of corporate policy is to threaten parents in such a way and this could be just a few bad apples. But there really is no good way to know who to talk to to get these problems addressed, so I'm talking to you in the hopes that it can be addressed. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Heather?
I just would like to defend Carl and to say that I've given birth there twice. I've had surgery there. I've had a hysterectomy and I've had nothing but great care. And I'm sure that your misfortune could have been handled, I think, rather than bringing it to the public attention of several thousand people, that maybe you could have handled this a little differently and I'm sure that...
They committed two felonies, Ms. Stevenson, at least, in my impersonation. Those are public matters. I could have legitimately called the police. I mean...
Excuse me, Ms. Stevenson, do you have a particular question or...
My question is, is why, why do you believe that the council is the only way that you could have handled this?
Well, you have jurisdiction. I mean, I could have called the police. Okay. I didn't, I didn't really think that that was effective. Could have filed a lawsuit. Those costs are just going to be passed on to the consumers and ultimately to those consumers who can't pass on costs themselves, namely the poor. Carl doesn't really make known who to talk to if you've got problems. I mean, you know, you look at their website, there's no ombudsman or anything like that. I don't recall getting a form for this hospital trip. I suppose I could bring it to the human rights or human, you have a human rights commission or something to that effect?
Human Relations Commission.
Human Relations. I could have brought it that way. It is my hope bringing this publicly, that this doesn't happen. It happening once is too many times.
I agree with that. I just don't want Carl to be defamed by one issue and I think that...
Well, it's my impression, let me, let me, I mean, it was my intent to clarify this at the end and maybe this didn't come clear.
Okay.
I do not believe that this is Carl proper, this is how they deal with whatever. I have the impression that this happened to be a couple of nurses or whatever.
Okay.
You know, however, how Carl handles that as an organization does reflect on them as an organization. If, you know, they take a look at this and say, issue a policy, say, "You know, we can't be threatening parents with DCFS when we have no right to do so." I mean, the abuse and neglect threshold is intentionally very high. It's not for silly things like, "Oh, we'd rather have that business instead of Christine."
Okay.
That was my question was answered and again, I would say Carl does a great job. Thanks.
Any other questions from committee members? Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to move on and introduce the representatives from Carl Foundation Hospital. They're here to give a presentation on their expansion plans. They've had two community meetings and will be having more. And they're going to give us a picture of their plans. This is Andy Manser from Carl Foundation Hospital and he can introduce his associates. Take it away. The little black thing is the microphone, so people will be able to hear you just fine and to see your presentation on the screen.
Thank you. My counterpart is Paul Weasey from JJR. JJR is out of, out of Chicago. Paul has been involved with our master site planning on the Carl campus for at least the last decade, so appreciate him coming tonight. Start with, just for a moment, the gentleman who just spoke. I apologize for any bad experience that he has had and would certainly offer after the meeting or after we are done to certainly talk with him privately for a few moments and make sure that we have him connected with the right people to talk about his concerns. I also appreciate all of your time tonight and also our neighbors who have come and shared some concerns and, and also some, some support for the process. What we wanted to do tonight is really share with you the process that we are going through. Some of you have been involved thus far and been to one of our neighborhood meetings. Tonight, we are not going to dive too deep into actual plans. We really want to talk about the process and the timeline that you can expect to lay the groundwork for the submittals and the larger discussions that we intend to have over the next couple of months. We're going to spend a couple of minutes talking about who Carl is, what it is that we do today, some history of where we have been with planning over the last several years and where we are today, and then the timeline for what's coming in the future to this council. We'd like to start the discussion with what our mission and vision as an organization in this community is, really serving all of you and the rest of the community through high-quality care. We also are involved in research and education and add that to the community. And we have a pretty powerful vision, which is becoming nationally recognized and not only for the healthcare in this community, but also for the employees in it that work with us. Brief overview of what our service area is. We typically focus on what happens in Urbana and in our neighborhood. Going to take a moment just to talk about what is the larger service area that Carl serves. It is very broad encompassing at least the seven counties that you see there. We are a major tertiary referral center for central Illinois. And we certainly know that where we sit and the neighborhood that we sit within. And the red outline on this image outlines what is currently the zone, the MIC zone, Medical Institutional Campus Zone that we refer to and will be talking about. We have a number of different access points. You see the fairgrounds noted to the north, which is a major support lot for all of our employees that come to our campus. And then the various facilities that are there today and a number of them having grown since our original agreement in 1995 with the city. Just focusing again on, on who we are. We've grown to 305 beds. We're a major referral center for a lot of reasons. Some of those are the fact that we're the levels only Level One Trauma Center, we're the co-parental center, and neonatal intensive care unit for the region. There's a lot of programs that, that we are known for, certainly some of the larger ones being the Heart Center and the cardiovascular programs that are offered to the region, the Cancer Center, as evidenced by the Mills Breast Cancer Institute and Carl Cancer Center. And then a host of various tertiary level services through the community. An idea of how large Carl has grown to as of this year, our service area population being just over 1.25 million people. Our emergency department has grown to be an extremely busy emergency department in this region with over 51,000 visitors... this region with over 51,000 visits a year. Our admissions have continued to grow also, and I'm going to give you just graphically here what has happened over the last several years. 1995 is when our last zoning agreement was reached with the city. And at that point, we had an average daily census of around 176, and we were just over 7,000 outpatient surgeries and inpatient surgeries. And the piece of the business has certainly grown drastically since that time is our outpatient surgery business being nearly double what it was in 1995. The ED visits have certainly gone up since that time also, with approximately 17,000 more emergency visits today than in 1995. With all of that growth certainly comes employee growth. And some of the issues that we face today as an organization certainly reflect that. If you've been to our campus at any time over the last couple of years, you know that parking is a major constraint on our campus. It comes from two sources. It comes from the growth in inpatient outpatient business and the patients and visitors that are coming to our organization, but also the employees that support that. So all of that is to paint a picture of what our future priorities are and that growth that we are continuing to have as an organization in this community. We are continuing on a daily basis to grow as an organization, to grow services and expand those services to our patients. And with that coming in enhance community benefit to this community and to the region. I'm going to let Paul Weisi talk about some of the challenges that we have today, but really to lay the groundwork of what the last plan was that was submitted to this council, to talk about some of the process that we're going through and what you can expect to see over the next couple of months and the timeline that goes with that, not only for the zoning application that will come, but also for the street closure application that will be submitted that's been spoken to some tonight. And we'll be happy to answer some questions.
This diagram actually represents, this is a diagram from the previous master planning process, started in 94, I think, finally concluded in 96. But at that time, we, we anticipated that as, as the population grew, as Carl's services grew, that there would be a need to expand the campus beyond what's identified in this diagram as short-term. So the, the red box, five to 15, and, and yellow, 15 to 20, again, were areas that were anticipated where campus growth would, would occur. The, what actually, the actual facilities that were in existence back in 94 are highlighted on this diagram, as well as the 94 to 96 MIC boundary. And if you take a look at that and as we go to the next slide, you can see over the last 10 or so years, the amount of facility expansion and development that's occurred within the MIC. And in fact, even there was an adjustment to the MIC boundary a few years back. So in not only building expansion, parking expansion, and roadway expansion, and frankly, at this point, we're, we're very tight within the current MIC to really add any facilities or any parking, and that's what this diagram represents. So as we, as we start to look at maintaining Carl's level of service to the community in this part of Illinois, we feel that we're going to need to expand beyond the current MIC boundary. And that expansion, we feel, is going to involve both a rezoning process as well as a street vacation process. The, the, the main reason for this is that not only is all of the land within the current MIC boundary utilized with some facility or some service such as parking or utilities, but the infrastructure of the existing infrastructure of the campus, there's an extensive tunnel system that connects many of the buildings on campus. There's an extensive utility system that connects all the buildings. The power plant was recently expanded and that sits at the corner of Kohler and, and University. And these, these facilities are multimillion dollar investments, and they really are sort of unseen, but they drive the entire operations of the campus. So the reason you see these areas in orange as being identified as immediate expansion opportunity areas is because of the existing infrastructure and because of the existing facilities inside the hospital. As you may have seen, there was, you know, recently several floors added to what's called the North Tower. And the facilities that are inside that building are expandable, but they're expandable as long as we build something adjacent to that building. And our infrastructure's in place for that expansion to take place. So again, these, this red area really highlights those areas where it makes sense for expansion to take place, and because of that, it will require us to look outside the current MIC. So we're really here tonight to give you some background on Carl. We've held a couple of neighborhood meetings, as you've heard, and the purpose of those neighborhood meetings was to get feedback from the community so that as we move forward with the planning process, we can incorporate as much of that feedback as possible. And we've gotten some great comments from the community, and I think we've tried to show the community how some of their comments are being incorporated. And we're really here tonight to ask the same thing of the council, is we would love your input at this point because we are still going through the planning process. And as we do move forward, we'd like to make sure that we incorporate your concerns as best that we can. What this indicates is the timeline. We're here tonight on April 9th for this general presentation to the city council. We do plan to have another public meeting in May. The exact date hasn't been set, but we'll send out invitations as we have done for the others. And then we do plan to, at this point, come back to, well, we would apply for some street vacations to the city in May and, and ask for city council review of those in a June timeframe. And then in addition to that, a separate rezoning application process also starting in May. And because of the various reviews that need to take place, we anticipate that going on through, through July.
So part of our discussion tonight was to share with you the, the intent of what we're planning to bring forward. We intentionally did not bring specific slides on, on how each of these pieces would work or traffic study information, those things. We think that both of the, both the street vacation issue as well as the zoning application itself are both substantial issues, both merit a lot of discussion, and we have broken those out for that reason. We're very committed to taking as much input from our neighbors and from the community as we can and to incorporate as much of that input into our planning process as possible. And there, there are things that we know are going to be struggles, specifically with, with Kohler. I think the, the comments and, and concerns are, are things that need to be talked about and need to be really vetted. There are reasons in that, in that specific instance that we think we need to close Kohler, and that does have to do with building attachment points and patient flow issues within any new facilities. A lot of that has to do with the procedural spaces that exist today on second floor. Typically, in any building expansion, we would be attempting to locate other like services or things that need to use that same infrastructure so that we don't need to duplicate that infrastructure. So there are, there are reasons, and we'll have reasons for the, the various things that we are proposing, and we'll be happy to dig into those details during each of the subsequent presentations. And just a point of clarification, we are intending on having public meeting number three prior to the street vacation application. So that there is a, another discussion with the community on that prior to that submittal. We had intended to have that third public meeting by the end of April, but calendars are not aligning, and we have gotten some feedback from some folks in the community that we can hold off until about the first week of May that they would like to attend. So we're working on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Andy and Paul? I saw Heather's hand first, I think, and then Charlie and Danielle, and then Dennis. Heather, go ahead.
Yeah, I, first of all, think it's so interesting that we not too long ago talked about planned unit development and how we talked about having neighborhood meetings and how that was very important. I just give you guys kudos for doing that on your own, and I am glad to know that there's more than, than one and that the citizens' concerns are, are heard. And I guess my question is, I heard about light pollution and landscaping. I've heard Charlie talk about light pollution before. I don't know what your plans are there. I guess...
You can speak to that.
If you could speak to that.
One of the things, or one of the slides that we presented at our last meeting was a concept of what future growth might look like because it's, we took from our first meeting, we had a lot of feedback on, it was good we were asking for input and folks appreciated that, but get more specific about what it is that we wanted to do. So we took a shot at that for the second meeting and have a couple of slides that, that show what the intent of, of growth into a new zone would look like. Some of that growth does indeed include parking, both shorter-term parking needs and then as you continue to redevelop over a period of years, parking that more specifically would support buildings. At this point, we have, we, we know that green space is important. We know that how we light lots is important, and we, we are looking at how we do that going forward. We know that from a lot of the feedback we've gotten last couple of months, that lighting is a bigger issue than we probably ever gave it credit. We've had feedback on that from both sides of University Avenue. So we're starting to look at, at how we do that with some of our existing lots and then also going forward. I'm going to let Paul speak specifically to more of our, our efforts and intents when it comes to landscaping and lighting.
Well, if you, if you've been on the Carl campus, you know landscaping is a very important system on the Carl campus as part of their marketing. And I can, I can assure you that whether it's parking or a new building or even service areas, landscaping's very important. And there's a lot of investment into the landscaping and the, the comments we heard tonight, I, I can guarantee we will bring those back up with the community, get into more specifics. We showed them a 15-foot buffer. Questions about, well, what's going to occur in the 15-foot buffer, we'll, we'll certainly communicate that to the community and, and, but I, I can assure you that it will be consistent with the overall landscape quality that's on the Carl campus, and I think that's quite high, and we're going to maintain that.
Thanks for answering my questions.
Great. Let's expand slightly. Some of what we heard in, in that last meeting was, we presented a concept when folks said, you know, from the first meeting, what's a parking lot, you know, what does that mean if it's up against my home and my property, which would be my concern? We took a shot at a draft of what would that look like? What does green space look like? And we got a lot of feedback on, why are the larger buffers away from my home, not near my home? And a lot of good dialogue on, you know, well, we have concerns about drainage and some of the technical things from an engineering perspective on how you actually drain parking lots and how land is, is pitched and so on. So I think it's an example of being the reason why we need to have these discussions so we can understand perspectives and come up with good solutions.
Great. Charlie?
Yeah, I guess I was expecting to see some real plans tonight, since I wasn't able to make your second meeting. You, it was up against a couple of other meetings that night, and I suspect I'm going to miss your third meeting if it's in, in early May. So maybe we can make some arrangements to, to see some of the actual stuff you're proposing before that third meeting. I guess one of the big concerns I have is with the closing of Kohler or how you develop Kohler because it's a major bike and pedestrian access north-south. In a car, you can go around safely, you know, if you want to still get on Kohler, you can jog around and, and though it does look like you're going to have to hit University for part of that, which isn't necessarily a good thing, as pointed out earlier. But it is the major north-south route for bicyclists trying to avoid being on Lincoln or on Cunningham. It is the only north-south route that gets you out of town because it connects up with Perkins Road going out to the, to the east. And if you don't mind, a two-block section of, of Lincoln, you avoid six blocks or eight blocks of Lincoln on, on a bicycle. And I, I personally use that route all the time. So I'd like to know how, how are you going to deal with this, with this, this alternate traffic flow? And even a somewhat curved route around your facilities, I don't, you know, I know you want a piece of Weisi as well, so I'd be interested to see, you know, even if it's, you know, an oval-shaped access around your, your building and parking deck, something that preserves the, the flow for car, truck, or car, bike, and pedestrian access is important to me. Okay. So another thing that I got from your first meeting, and I may have raised the question then, is, is that I really hope that you can develop a better way to phase your constructions so that you don't need to tear down affordable housing, which is what you have. I mean, as, as landlords, you have very affordable housing up there that's in good shape and so on. And I'd hate to see it torn down for temporary parking lots. I, I think, you know, that some creativity is called for on your part and maybe even building at least part of parking structure in advance of some of the big buildings that you're planning on doing. One thought that comes to mind is that if you're planning on building office space facing university, the backside of that could be a new parking deck facility. That's being done in other places. You might want to consider whether you need to build or start building a parking deck to the west of your proposed new building in conjunction with or as part of, of, of other building plans so that you have more structured parking available in advance of, of needing to replace other structures. So I'd ask that you be creative there because I, I'd really hate to see houses torn down for temporary lots. And again, you know, without having seen any specific plans, I don't know what's temporary and what's permanent in your plans. Getting back to what, what others have already said, I think the issue of, of a good neighbor, what, you know, your, the lighting, noise, traffic concerns, landscaping that helps buffer noise and lighting are all good things and a concern to the houses that are left across the streets and such from these new facilities. In some cases, it's, and I've advocated this in other situations where it's, it's, you want the backyards to be up against each other as opposed to facing because you can get better buffering that way. So wherever that can be done, I'd encourage it. And finally, my, my last question really is, and we're going to be talking about this more later this evening, is how green from a, from an energy conservation, from an environmental point of view, can you make these new buildings, new parking lots, new structures? And the more, the better.
All very good feedback and input. I'll take a shot at trying to respond to them. Looking over Paul's shoulders, he's been taking notes.
You're not going to be able to read my writing, so...
You are correct.
I can, I can email you any of this stuff, too, so...
I would certainly be more than willing to go over and spend some time and go over certainly what we reviewed last, at our last meeting for more specifics. I think we talked about a lot of those issues in more depth. Our first pass at traffic studies and addressing traffic flow certainly was focused on vehicular traffic. I think that's immediately where our mind goes to because that's the largest volume of traffic that we see. We have, though, studied how to begin moving pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic around the campus, and Paul has created some slides that we can certainly go over that speak to that in more, more detail because there, there are ways to, to get more creative and to find ways through a campus rather than blocking off on an entire campus and sending folks two or three blocks to the east or west. There's certainly some, some ways that we would propose to get, get through the Carl campus and to, and to keep that connectivity because we know that that is important. We're also looking at, you know, what does it mean from a, a safety standpoint? What is the, the impact of, of doing... What is the, the impact of, of doing street closures or building additional facilities on that pedestrian flow and how does that pedestrian flow interact with all the various types of traffic? So certainly something that we're willing to focus on and to come up with some solutions on. The.
Housing.
The housing is something that we're, we're very aware of. We are preparing for our, our May meeting to, to dive into that topic much deeper. From a couple of perspectives, one is understanding what is the impact of this type of future development on home values for, for our neighbors that do own homes around us. We are working on trying to find some folks that can come in and spend some time with us specifically on that topic so that there's someone with that expertise that can answer questions or get the information that everybody needs to, to understand the impact.
I would like to jump in. One thing to, to actually look for, look at is whether any of those houses are worth moving to new locations.
Yes. In fact, we have had a request from one neighbor already who had, had heard of the discussions and asked if that was a possibility. So it's something that didn't immediately come to mind, but you know, there are people that live in the neighborhood who have family members who indeed do that for a living. So it's a, that's another perspective of what can be done. On the affordable housing piece, I want to clarify our intent when it comes to the homes that we own in the neighborhood. And we do own several and those homes are within the area that we are going to request the rezoning. Our intent is not to begin taking all of those houses down and that's, you know, within a year that the neighborhood, wherever we own homes, is flat. We are planning on doing what we, we historically do with our properties that are within the zone, that as we had a project that we work with the folks affected by that project in the specific area, impact area of that building and related parking, to help relocate them to other, other places, either within other homes that Carl owns or within other places in the community. We do not intend to demolish homes throughout the neighborhood immediately. We'd be looking at that on a project-by-project basis and talking about that. So I know that that had been something that came out of the last meeting that was a concern and we felt that we should clarify that the intent is to take that on a project-by-project basis. We, we understand that we need to look for options. We're, we're interested in working with developers in the area, homeowners in the area that can help us put those options together. We do not necessarily want to get into building apartments and houses ourselves. We don't feel that that is necessarily a good use of our resources, but we, we would like to work with those in the community that are in that business.
Yeah, I, I think that we did, we did share with the community this idea of how we would develop a parking area within, within this district that we're considering and Andy was talking about runoff and how we plan to handle that as much as possible on the surface, create, create detention areas that double as habitat and our walk system would move through and all part of our landscaping and greening of, of that area of the community. So we'll be very pleased to, to show you more detail on that, show the community more detail on that as to how specific we plan to address those elements. So I appreciate you bringing those up and I feel confident that we'll provide some very, very good solutions for that.
Yeah, the building, buildings themselves, you know, we have, we have not yet constructed a facility that would be considered a.
Lead.
Yes, lead-certified building or self-supporting environment. We are starting to bring some, some newer technologies into some of our newer facilities and looking at, you know, a lot of the, the things that chew up a lot of energy like the heating and ventilation. What you'll see with the Mills Breast Cancer Institute and the Carl Cancer Center is a lot more use of, of natural light, not only for lighting purposes, but heating elements. I, I think that moving towards more energy-efficient buildings is something that we'll continue to do as we start to look at the, the scope of a, a future facility on the site that we're starting to look at to the west of the North Tower. We do have an opportunity to look at what are the technologies in the building, what are the building materials that are in the building? And I think the, the shift in, in the facilities industry with frankly, the, the cost of utilities is pushing us to look at every opportunity that we have when we, when we construct. So we have not talked specifically of building a lead-certified building yet, although it is something that is of a lot of interest to a lot of people within Carl. So it's something I'll certainly take under advisement and see where we can start to bring those into any new facilities.
Great, thank you. Danielle?
Yeah, thanks for coming to us fairly early in the process and I'm sorry, I also missed the meetings. Been sick and I hope to get to the May meeting and see some of the specifics. I do want to state upfront that I'm extremely supportive of keeping essential infrastructure in the city limits and in particular within, you know, fast transportation in the case of an emergency room or for folks who are visiting, family members, walkable, bikable, on the bus route, et cetera. I have a couple of questions and I'll just, maybe I'll ask a question, you can respond. I have three or four. The first is, do you plan on expanding south of University Avenue outside the MIC?
No, we do not. All the facility expansion that we have been contemplating for the future is really now growth for inpatient outpatient business around that main tower complex that we currently have. Within the zoning request that will come forward, we, we do think that there will be some expansion of that zone that we will, we'll ask for that would encompass some of the parking that we have that we know is going on just south of the railroad tracks, but it's really to clean up property lines and try to bring those within to, within to the, the current zone.
Did you say south of the, of the tracks or north of the tracks?
South of the railroad tracks. There is a, there are properties that we have where we park, park cars just to the south of that track. It's basically a parking lot.
Okay.
That runs east to west. And then we have a couple of storage buildings that exist to the west of Kohler and we would just like to bring those into that plan, too, so that it's all-inclusive.
Okay. The second, but in terms of buildings, you're not talking about building, building?
No.
Secondly, is the, what are the long-term parking ideas? I know currently you're using the fairgrounds and of course, it's a question of you rely on the fairgrounds to be there to be able to, to function that way. And I do know it's a little bit of a jaunt away from your actual facilities. Are you planning on building another deck? Do you, I heard you that you were planning on incorporating parking into that space. Would that replace that parking or augment it, et cetera? So could you talk a little bit about parking plans?
Sure. We are, from all the, the parking study work that we have done over the last couple of years, continuing to, to reevaluate where we are and what needs we're meeting and so on, we know that we're in excess of 200 spaces short today to meet our patient customer parking needs. We, we continue, we plan to continue to, to rely on the fairgrounds for the parking needs that it, that currently supports and we have a shuttle infrastructure that serves those lots on a daily basis rather efficiently. That shuttle system also allows us to begin incorporating other surface lots around our campus where we can start to rely on those for more customer parking. So we intend to continue the reliance on, on those existing systems. With regards to how do we meet our, our existing parking needs that are unmet, that, and the, the goal of our parking solutions is to, one, provide convenient parking for our, for our customers and patients that come to Carl. That's really first and foremost, the need that, that we aim to meet. We have staff parking needs that we will continue to use the fairgrounds for and also some of our more outlined lots to meet those needs. We do think that there is surface parking that needs to be developed over the next few years within what is currently the MIC zone and potentially to the, to the north. We don't have specific numbers on each of those, but we, we do know approximately how much can be accomplished in each of those lots. And we're also studying with any new facilities that we bring onboard, what the parking demands are gonna be to meet that. So, you know, we know that we have a, a need today of a few hundred plus and we know that with any new facility, we'll automatically have a, an increased deficit. We know that structured parking is an option and it's one that we utilize today with, with both of the existing parking decks. We do have, have an idea of where those, where future decks can go. We do not in the near term plan to build structured parking for a couple of reasons. One is the, the cost implications, you know, in a parking deck, they are a substantial cost at this point, which means that when we place them, we wanna make sure that they're absolutely in the right spot for the next several decades. So we would like to have our facility growth nailed down and make sure that we know what our future inpatient outpatient space needs look like so that when it does come time in the future to build that type of structure, that it is sized correctly and in the right location.
And, and I should also point out the comments made earlier about Kohler and providing pedestrian and bicycle routes north and south. We wanna very much encourage alternative means of transportation for people to get to the campus. A gentleman here walked to the emergency room and we're certainly gonna provide a walk system and we've got bike racks on campus. We're gonna continue to provide those for, whether it's a visitor, staff, again, alternative means of coming to the campus. The shuttle bus system is, works very well on campus from the, from the fairgrounds and will continue to serve both the north and s- south of University. So we're trying to address parking, but we're not losing sight of alternative means of transportation for people to get to the campus if that's an option for, for someone to get to the campus.
Actually, your bike parking leaves a lot to be desired.
Yes. We are actually in, in the process of improving that. We have found, through a lot of internal feedback from our physicians and employees, that there's a lot of them who would like to ride their bike to work if there was a safe place to park it that was convenient to the facility. So we actually will be starting to put some new bike parking in place over the next couple of weeks.
That's good to hear. I just, I just wanted to reiterate a few comments and make some comments. Those were my questions for now. The first is that Crystal Lake Park is the biggest park in the county and that it's important that people be able to, to get there. And so, you know, the campus, the landscaping on Carl campus is beautiful. I found it easy to walk on that campus and so I would encourage you on the west side as you, you've definitely done a good job on the east side, as you develop the west side to kind of use similar thoughts so that folks can, say for my district, which is, you know, just south of University Avenue, be able to travel directly to rather than around Carl to get to the park. And I, and definitely looking at bike and pedestrian access. I have seen firsthand the issues you have with Kohler particularly because it's your emergency access and, and I've seen pedestrian and car conflicts at that location, people trying to get across and, and some of the safety concerns. So, so I understand some of those concerns. I think that in looking at housing, there's a couple of things you're kind of uniquely situated to do. I know that you're not a housing developer. On the other hand, you've been a good landlord in that area and you have taken care of that housing stock. And so you also basically are sitting on beachfront property next to a gorgeous park and I find it unfortunate, although this is the way history has gone, that, that much of that beachfront pop, property is actually for employee parking instead of used for housing. And I would like in the future to continue to look at possibilities to have housing, an increase in affordable housing in that area and in housing in general that can take advantage of the park, just like Carl Hospital takes advantage of, of that park. And so Carl can really be a leader in partnering with the community to develop housing as you continue to grow. So I feel like the kind of win-win picture is Carl's, you know, remains in the core of the community, it's clo, it's easy to get to, it's a, you know, a major attraction for the community, it's a major employer in the community, it's next to a gorgeous park and it has been a partner in both some of the, the charity work you've, you've done as well as in terms of helping to, to, as you grow, ensure that there's a continued stock of affordable housing in that neighborhood. So I'm interested in conversations as we progress for how Carl can play a role in, in ensuring that there continues to be affordable housing as you, you know, kind of fulfill your need to expand and take some of that housing away from that neighborhood.
Thanks Danielle. Okay, we have three more speakers, Dennis and then Robert and then Laurel. I saw all your hands and I encourage everybody to continue being succinct as you happen. It's after eight o'clock. I just wanted to give the time check update and Dennis, go ahead.
I did attend the first meeting you had at Carl and I was not able to attend the second one and of course, when you hear that a, a major employer with a very large facility is going to expand, of course you are immediately interested in knowing what they're gonna do. And so far, you've given us sort of conceptual things and background on statistics. I think we're probably all quite keen to see schematics and plans and elevation images, which I imagine because you're, I have a feeling that Carl plans carefully, probably has perhaps devised potential schematics and drawings probably a couple of years ago. Maybe I'm wrong. Since the next thing that's gonna be happening of significance is the street vacation question, it's gonna be very difficult to even evaluate that action without a really understanding the shape and the size of the buildings that are gonna be abutting that street, how they're gonna change, what kind of bypass or overpass you might be picturing attached to the building or not. So when will we find these things out?
At the, at the last community meeting, we provided two different slides that we went over. One is a, we're turning more of a, a near term over the next three to five years with a building footprint for a inpatient outpatient expansion with a, a shape. We're in the process right now from a programming standpoint of gathering the information on what all goes into a new facility. What is it that we can, first of all, where are our, our needs today and, and over the next several years when we look at our strategic plan and our growth trends? With it, with that then, what are the facility needs that go with it and how much of a new facility could we afford and in what timeframe? So that is the, the process we're in as, as an organization. We have, you know, a, a long list of various types of needs and are starting to program that. There is not a floor-by-floor schematic yet of what rooms look like. There is, there is some information that we can share on where we think entrances are in and out of that facility. And we, we have begun to put together for at least a couple of floors, what are the types of services that we think are there which drive the adjacency needs. So there is not a specific floor plan or a rendering of a, a building from the outside because we are in that programming phase. There is a second phase or a second tier of planning that we're looking at of that north of church. There's a lot of questions about what does that actually look like? What is it that we're, we're talking about and what's the vision for that? And we've looked at the, the different types of outpatient facilities we've built, like the, like the Spine Institute, those types of centers of excellence that, that we've started to create and looked at how those fit within the neighborhood throughout that zone that we're talking about expanding into, to study that deeper and understand what those options are. those options are. What we are, are doing with the process is understanding what the constraints of our future planning are. We do not invest the tens of thousands of dollars to begin designing floor plans for buildings through the neighborhood before we know that that's a possibility. So, it's, it's, it's difficult to commit the resources to doing schematic designs and renderings of buildings that are really future needs that will be defined over the next several years, before we know what our, our limitations are to grow.
So, you're saying that you don't have any idea what your buildings might look like?
We have, we have conceptually an idea of what we would do north of Church Street. In the near term, we know that we have, we have some parking constraints in, in two, in two ways. One, that we are critically short on parking today, and we also know that we have renovations that need to occur to one of our major parking structures in the very near term. So, we're looking at how we can address the needs of that facility in order to renovate it, so we can continue to rely on it for the next several decades.
All right.
With regards to a building to the west of the North Tower, we do have, we have some idea of what that would look like. It's very conceptual. It is, you know, it's based on some ideas and some very preliminary floor programming, some staffing, but that is something that we can, can certainly start to bring forward as it's approved internally to bring forward.
Well, it's kind of problematic, because usually when a developer, I guess you'd call Carl, is into a development phase, you know, comes to the city and it needs, you know, a plan, to work with the city with a plan, and usually the city sees diagrams and, you know, you know, layout sketches, and, and, you know, usually, usually there's questions about certain waivers, you know, that might be appropriate to grant to the development. Certainly, changing the direction or closing off a city street is such a waiver. And so, it would seem to me that you'd have to show us some pretty specific information before we could start granting closures of streets, just because we don't have any idea really of, of the, how this integrates with the needs of the city, or the needs of the citizens living or if it's south of it.
Okay. Good take, and I will, I will try to do a better job representing what those are.
And I, and I imagine you will. I mean, I trust that. But it's coming up in, in May, I mean, some of these meetings are going to come up, you know, next month, and...
Yes.
Okay. So, then, my other thing is, it's an urban development with the neighborhood around it, and we are looking at infill, useful infill. I think this is very useful. You already have a tower, the North Tower, is it, would you call it the North Tower that was recently constructed? And it's said to be the highest construction, or the highest building in Urbana right now. It would seem likely that if you're going to be joining up a, a facility or a, an extension, and you're relying on using not only the elevator bays in the North Tower, which you said you would be using elevator bays, but also, you know, other infrastructure, I'm, I'm assuming that, that it's going to be a tower that's maybe similar in size or almost equal in size.
Yes.
And I would say that is a useful use of space, because building up doesn't create a larger footprint, but it's more useful to an urban setting. My, my concern, perhaps, and I know that there's such a thing as scaling, as when approaches the edges of, of a plan, and you're trying to integrate into a neighborhood, but you do have two independent buildings right now, the Breast Cancer Research Center and the Spine, I can't remember the Spine Building.
Spine Institute, yes.
Spine Institute. And these are like, and I mentioned this before, these are like little, one-story specialty shops for healthcare. And it sounds like that, that there's a tendency or a trend now to provide, like I would call, specialty services as an aspect of healthcare providing. And if the, if the plan is to have several more such offerings in the medical complex, it might be more useful on an urban planning scale to connect them, to assemble them in some manner, so that you can be sharing infrastructure, you can be sharing utilities, you can be sharing parking lots, and you can be sharing, you know, other kinds of needs, so that you're not using or scattering little tiny gems around and, and taking up space. And so, I would suggest consolidation of some of those plans for the future, even though you don't identify them necessarily.
Yeah.
And the last thing I was going to suggest is that if space is at a premium, have you considered underground parking? Because not, for example, the Getty Museum in California, all of the parking for that building isn't, is underground. There's five stories of underground parking. And the entire undergraduate library is an underground facility. So, apparently, it is feasible to have watertight, well-thought-out underground facilities. And rather than to obstruct the neighborhoods, or to tear down, or to put in a lot of surface parking, which takes up yards and yards, and acres and acres of runoff pavements, and, or be even perhaps building a tower of parking, I would suggest that, that, that you sink some of your parking. It still would be attainable, it would be, it would be insulated, and it's, it's a very common way of providing for urban parking, and I, I would hope that you would consider that. Thank you.
Okay. Those weren't really questions, but Andy, did you want to briefly respond to any of those?
Well, the timeframe is certainly a question for me.
Okay.
Time frame on the specifics. On the specifics? I think we can certainly bring back more detail for some of the initial things that we're looking at in, in a new tower expansion. We know that we have some, some fairly specific needs. I don't believe that we can share a, a floor-by-floor for a, an 11-story building, what that looks like. That's the existing height of the, the North Tower. We are intending to build any new facility that attaches and abuts to that North Tower, that that could indeed be built to the same level. So, we are intending to build a structure that would have vertical expansion capability like the, like the North Tower. That is something that we think makes a lot of sense, particularly in a, in an inpatient hospital facility, because it keeps all of your infrastructure very consolidated, and it makes a lot of sense. The, I think your point on the scaling of, of buildings is a, is a very good one. We've have, you know, we do have a, a one-story structure down on, on Lincoln Avenue, and as we approach the, the homes in the neighborhood, the thought has been that we would have some lower facilities and not build the 10 and 11-story structures up against houses. So, I think it's finding a balance of, of what's going to work, but, but having enough vertical height and expansion, that it also is a good use of the space, which is at a premium. So, we will take that under advisement. I think that consolidating the, the infrastructure as much as possible is a very good recommendation. We have not studied underground parking in a lot of detail yet. We have, we've taken an initial review to meet some of the needs that we have. We found it to be an extremely expensive option, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at it as, as an opportunity, and, and we can, we can look at that in some of our, our future planning. It is something that I'm very familiar with, and I've parked several stories underground for many years. So, it is a feasible option from an operational standpoint. I think it's, you know, from a cost standpoint, does that, does that make sense for us or not, and, and we can look at that, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll have Robert, and then the mayor.
Thank you.
Robert?
Well, I want to thank you for your presentation. I was there last, last time, and I found it quite interesting. One of the key elements that I hear my constituents talk about, which is in Ward Three, where you are, is the fact of the street closure. And I, I looked at your traffic studies the last time, and I found them extremely interesting in terms of what the projected flows were, how it'd impact University Avenue. And I think if you could ask the what-if questions.
Okay.
What if, for example, going west, Church, what could happen? That would be a good option in terms of reducing the, the flow issues and the potential congestion, because Goodwin Avenue is, is all the way on campus and all the way out to Bradley, so, I mean, and it also has bike trails. So, that would be a, a good what-if question. And I know that people were concerned about property values, and you plan to do that on your next, next session. They are also interested in whether you are willing to work with developers or movers and have houses moved within the community to make, I think Mrs. Chinewant brought that up. But we're also interested in the phasing part. For example, you mentioned that the buildings' footprints that were on the north side of Church Street were similar to that of the Spine Center. I, I know, in terms of timing, over the timeframe, if that were to come to fruition, would it be in the next five years, 10 years? That kind of question.
Okay. I think with the, with those types of facilities north of Church, it's a, it's a combination. I think we have some, some needs that we have been starting to talk about, as recently as the last couple of weeks, of, of future program needs that, that could occur in that area, and those probably are five-year type options. We are beginning to do a lot of internal facility planning and, and understanding what our current space constraints are a little bit better, so we can look at what those options are, and what things do now need to be located within the, the core buildings and, and can be moved out. So, I think it's feasible that, that you will see some things start to be developed over there besides just parking in the next five years. But it really is a, a zone for growth through, for the next 10 to 15 years, and then upwards of 20 years with the northern end of that, so.
My last question has to do with energy conservation, and I know that when you have a facility of this magnitude in close proximity to a neighborhood, the kinds of electrical draws and, and I know we don't pay the penalties like they do in Chicago, but I'm sure that you are taking all that into consideration, and possibly, the only thoughts that I have on that subject would be thermal storage for, as a possibility for some of the facilities to reduce the necessity for large cooling capacities and that kind of thing.
Yes. And I can't specifically speak to all the, the technologies, but there certainly are technologies out there that are feasible to start bringing into these new buildings. And I hear the, the council's interest in that, and it is very much noted. I, I think that's something that, that we will talk about much more actively as we plan.
Thank you. I'm going to pick up the chair while Brandon is taking a quick break. Mayor, you had the next question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I've been very interested in making sure that there's a healthy balance with the needs of the neighborhood. Is it reasonable that you would consider having as a goal that the number of residential units would be the same, or perhaps even greater? And would you come up with specific plans on how to move houses, or where to relocate houses, when you have your May housing discussion?
Yeah. I had a thought of it in that particular way, but I think that that's certainly a goal that we can strive for. I'm not sure what the solutions are that meet that up, sitting here tonight, but that's, I think, worthy goal that we can focus on.
Yeah, because it, it eliminates the need for parking, you get people who can walk to work.
It does.
And the other question I have is on your, your power plant. Do you just provide all your own power, or do you have to buy power from the local utility?
We, we buy our electricity from Ameren, and, you know, we, we purchase our utilities. The power plant is a, a distribution site for the electricity and for the gas. What we generate there, once that's been distributed, is all of our own steam, chilled water, and so on. So, it's a, really a large heating and cooling plant. We also do generate our own emergency power, of course, with our generator backup system for all of our emergency power needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, the last, Heather had a question.
I failed to, when I got addressed first, ask you a question about, I don't see the fire chief here, what studies have been done as far as closing Kohler, and fire safety and, and police, and even ambulance access as far as timeliness is concerned? I guess my biggest concern is, if you close a street, I, I realize there's the station across from Vineyard on Lincoln, which is great for fire, but when you have police over here and, and I, and ambulance, ambulance is coming from the east, I guess, my concern is timeliness of getting patients there, and if there's, there's problems in the homes, getting fire and police there on, in a timely manner.
Okay. I, I know that we have an extremely in-depth traffic study that is several reams of paper. I can't speak specifically to what those impacts are tonight, but that is something we'll be prepared to, to address when we come back.
Okay. Any final questions from committee members? I have none tonight. You've covered all the topics. Okay, well, thank you very much, Andy and Paul.
Thank you all. You're very generous with your time. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda tonight, we have a green building and an energy conservation code update. Actually, I think what I'd like to do is call on the two members of the public who are here to speak first, and then we'll have a staff update, and then we'll have a sustainable Urbana discussion. The first of the two people here to speak is Kristi Nugent from 507 West Pennsylvania. Kristi's here to talk on the topic of solar panels and easement issues in her yard. We'll give you a second here to switch, switch tables and presentations.
Go ahead, Kristi. State your name and address, and I'll call up the other side here.
I'm Kristi Nugent, 507 West Pennsylvania Avenue. And my husband and I are very interested in solar panels, any type of renewable resource. And we have worked very hard to get our electrical usage down as low as we possibly can. We're down at about 200 kilowatt hours every month, and for a family of five, so, pretty good. But anyways, this has allowed us to now, and especially since the state offers a 30% instant rebate on any solar panel installation, it has now allowed us to financially be able to afford to put in solar panels. However, if anyone's familiar with the state's street neighborhood, there are lots of trees. And we are on the south side of Pennsylvania Avenue, so we're in the very small lots. And so, when we had somebody come out to talk to us about solar panels, he said that on our roof, we have a very small house also, so our roof size does not allow solar panels to go on the roof, besides the fact that part of the reason why we, our electrical's so low is because we don't have to use air conditioning, really, because we have so much shading over our house. So, therefore, we really can't put it on our house. The only part of our yard that is not shaded is in the utility easement, and that's because the utilities have to keep all the trees trimmed back there. And there's an example up there, as far as like, what we want to do is a pole mount installation with the solar panels on that. It would be in the back of our yard. The top of it could be, you know, about seven feet, six to seven feet tall at the highest point, and we would have two of those. What that, it would, that would actually, on good sunny days, provide us with probably a lot more energy than what we would need, therefore, going back to the grid, is another example. When I called the city planning committee about putting it in, first of all, they kind of scratched their head and said, oh, they don't even really know what that would be considered, so they had to kind of come back to me. I guess nobody else has put them in as of yet. But then, they called me back and they said, well, it would be considered a utility, I believe, so it couldn't actually go into the utility easement. And they said that they have never really heard of, it'd be very, very rare to, to get a exception granted to put it there. So, basically, I'm So basically, I'm coming to asking, please, can we do this? Because first of all, I think that any kind of example of solar panels being put up in a home and at a private residence and being used would be a great example and to, you know, and let other people consider doing it because, especially with the rebate, instant rebate from the state of Illinois, and then of course the federal rebate, it is actually much more affordable than what people may think. And I also think the fact that we're putting it in the State Street neighborhood where, you know, just tons of trees, hopefully we'll get people thinking who live in the cornfield homes or homes out, the newer developments, thinking about, well, maybe, you know, this is something we should think about doing because they have an abundance of sunlight, no trees. It's quiet, it's clean, you know, it is going to be something in the backyard that you can look at, but that you will see, but I have talked to my neighbors and they're very positive about it. And we would actually be giving power back to the grid. So that's, that's basically.
Okay, thanks, Kristi. What questions and comments? Charlie, go ahead.
Kristi, what's the size of the panel on this picture?
Well, they're usually like six by eight, the actual square part.
This one's a little bigger than?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it's more like this size here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Dennis?
Okay, so you, I guess it was, you said that was, you went to the planning commission and they gave you some feedback. Are you in a process of asking for a waiver right now with one of the commissions or departments here?
Well, just trying to find out if it would be something that we could realistically get. Could we get, you know, a waiver to actually install in the easement where we have the sunlight?
I guess we'd have to have some information, and I guess staff might, so Libby Tyler just walked up. Go ahead, Dr. Tyler, our director of community development.
Thank you. I'm trying to piece together the contacts, and I believe that what they are seeking is, it's not a utility easement, it's a setback, a zoning setback. And the concern in the zoning ordinance is that utilities, I'm sorry, mechanical equipment, which includes things of this nature or air conditioning units, that kind of thing, are to be kept out of the setback. What is the process to allow that regardless of the regulation is called a zoning variance? And there is an application. You do have a right to request zoning variance. That does go to the zoning board of appeals. So that is the process in our division to seek this approval. For variance, we would notify your neighbors, and if they didn't object, of course, that would be helpful. And we also look for unique circumstances, such as the orientation you might need for the equipment or saving trees or anything peculiar about the shape or the type of lot that you have, size of the lot, things of that nature. So that's the process that you would need to follow for this.
Okay, yeah, saving trees, that's basically why we want to put in the easement is because that way we don't have to cut down any of the trees in our yard.
Yeah, question, Robert, and then Charlie.
When you said, excuse me. When you said a variance rather than, would you go through that one more time?
As far as I can make out, this is a zoning rule, not a subdivision rule that is seeking to be varied, that we do not allow mechanical equipment to be placed in the setbacks. And that's so you have some clear zone around the neighboring lot. So it's not so much an easement issue, it's a setback issue. And how do you get permission to encroach in the setback? You go to the zoning board, and if it's a large permission, it then, it's called a major variance, and it also comes to the city council, and that depends on how many feet you wish to encroach. And I don't have that information.
So when she had to do the application, she would consider the footprint of the unit?
I think that's, that's one variable. We would look at her property line and how close she would need to put the solar panels to determine the encroachment.
Could she work with you to find out the specifics?
Absolutely.
There you go. Okay.
Great. Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, on the flip side of my, of the thing I handed out for everybody tonight, item number three, at the very end of the Smythe Green Sustainable Urbana things, I have a comment on this, and it strikes, you know, I, there's a whole lot of green discussion we're going to have here first, but it strikes me that this is the kind of thing we want in the community, if at all possible. Of course, in the State Street neighborhood, we do have, you know, we have these mature 60, 70, 80-foot trees to deal with, and the utility easement is the obvious place for putting low-height solar arrays. And, you know, if I can grow small trees or plant a garden here, which are essentially biological solar collectors, I should be able to put an artificial solar collector here for energy generation without a major hassle. So I hope that Kristi can work with staff. Staff can figure out how to get this to happen without it putting too much of a burden on the homeowner. And if we have to fine-tune some things to encourage energy conservation and energy production in our, in our various ordinances, I would ask staff to bring those back to us as they work through this. So I assume you want Kristi to make an appointment with you, Libby, and get this worked out? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? None? Thanks very much, Kristi.
Thanks.
Okay, our next speaker this evening is Catherine Klingenberg. She is going to speak on the topic of energy efficiency, and with all of these green building and energy conservation code issues tonight, she'll be giving us some background and answering some questions. Go ahead, Catherine.
Thanks, Brandon. Yeah, you had sent me an email, and you were asking me a couple of questions to provide a little bit of a background information on energy efficiency, kind of like our energy situation as a globe that we are in right now, and also the tools in the US that we have developed to try to regulate our energy consumption. One of the most fitting models that I've come across during the last couple of years is the 2,000-watt society model that was developed by Nova Atlantis at the ETH in Zurich. And it is a research institution, and they went ahead and they looked at how much energy every person in every country is actually using. And they came up with a diagram showing that the per capita energy usage in the United States currently is a 10,000 watt current energy usage. That compares to 6,000 watts in Europe per person, 5,000 in Switzerland. Of course, they were particularly also looking at the Swiss population. And it goes down to as low as 200 watts per person in countries like Bangladesh. So what they, from that, was that the only way that we can create a sustainable energy situation globally is to reduce energy usage per person to 2,000 watts. So immediately, we will see that in the United States, we have long ways to go. We have about 8,000 watts per person to cut down. Those numbers might not mean very much to you right now, and I will try to explain that when I talk about the 2030 Challenge, LEED, and Energy Star, and passive house energy standards. But the 2,000 watt per person corresponds to exactly the 2030 Challenge and the passive house standard as it has been developed in Europe. So what are these energy standards, these tools that we have developed? We have the 2030 Challenge put forward by Admis Ria very recently. He's calling for action specifically looking at climate change. We have the LEED certification system, which most of us know about by now. We have the Energy Star rating system, and then we have more extreme energy conservation standards like the passive house standard in Europe. So I would like to start with the 2030 Challenge put forward by Admis Ria because it directly relates to the energy consumption in terms of carbon emissions, and he's also coming from an architectural background, so his concern, how to contribute in a positive way, is buildings in the building sector, the building industry. Figures in that regards are 76% of all coal-fired power plant-generated electricity is currently being used to heat and cool our building stock. Total in the US, 48% of all energy consumption is used to heat and cool our buildings. That results in an incredible contribution of operating buildings to greenhouse gas emissions. And it would make an amazing difference if we can cut these greenhouse gas emissions costs due to operation of our buildings down to zero, which he is requesting. So what is he basing his action plan on? He refers to the energy consumption in the United States right now. The projections are that by 2050, if we go about business as usual today, we will raise our energy consumption only in the United States by 34%. So we are already topping it off. We're already stressing the atmosphere. We already need about two atmospheres to safely deal with the greenhouse gas emissions. So this is pretty, it's a pretty dismal picture if you look at it. If that really happens and we go on business as usual, by 2050, we will have to deal with, of course, melting of the poles. Scientists are not entirely sure. It's between two and six feet. If it really happens that it is six feet, then by 2050, a third of Florida will be underwater, most of the coastal regions as well, and we will have to deal with a severe environmental migration process. Interestingly enough, best place to be at that point will be around Chicago. So people who are kind of cynical might want to invest in some land around here. But I still have hope that we can actually stop it. So, but that has to happen within the next 10 years. Within the next 10 years, we have to be well on our ways to do so. So that's the 2030 Challenge. By 2030, Admis Ria suggests we need to implement energy savings codes that by 2030, all buildings are carbon neutral, which means no fossil fuels will be used to heat or cool them or to generate the electricity that is being used inside of these buildings. And that's a significant challenge. So that challenge, interestingly enough, matches the passive house standard, and that's what I've been promoting for the last four years. The passive house standard reduces heating and cooling by 90 to 95%, and overall, it amounts to an energy bill reduction by 70%. And at that point, the remaining energy can realistically be met through renewable energies. And I really compliment Kristi because, like, if everybody was thinking that way, she's doing 2030 today. So this is kind of like what we need to get in 2030, and not just homes, but also buildings like Cal. So how do these other systems compare to that that we have in place today, which we rate how green we are, how sustainable we are? Energy Star, a building qualifies as Energy Star if the overall utility usage is being reduced by 15% or more. So you're already an Energy Star home if you only reduce your utility bills by 15%, which is way away from where we need to be. That is in reference to the 2004 International Residential Code. So then, the next system that we have in place is LEED. And LEED is a very interesting rating system to me because it is actually possible to have a LEED-rated building and only comply with Energy Star. So looking at the situation that we have globally, we really need to bring down our energy costs operational down like by 90% ASAP, and LEED focuses mainly on green building and green materials, which is also very important. But if you consider the energy that is embodied in materials, it's about a tenth of what we need to reduce in energy consumption. So that's why I personally consider immediate action in the energy usage of buildings, number one priority. Okay, so that means, like, the LEED rating system means that out of 130 possible points that you can get to be LEED rated, 34, only 34 can come through energy efficiency. And that being the most dominant green sustainable rating system right now, that worries me a little bit because that is not doing enough in the direction of energy efficiency, I don't think. Back to the 2030 Challenge, Admis Ria has a website. It's called architecture2030.org, and he has a fabulous PowerPoint presentation there. Check it out. He has prognosis of energy increase globally and his schedule. He says that we should reduce carbon today by 50%. We got to start today. And then it increases like by 10% by 2010, and then by 70% by 2015. This is a very steep challenge, and I believe that we have to address it immediately. If we look at projects like Cal, those large projects have a long lead time in planning. And if we do not take immediate action in implementing energy standards and energy codes, then the future buildings that are going to be finished in 2010 will still be built at the level that we have today. So immediate action is called for. Brandon also asked me about comparing investment into energy efficiency versus economic development because there's always the argument made, well, this is going to slow down our economy, it's economically not feasible. Actually, the DOE had some kind of a meeting two years ago, I think, and the question was asked which energy source, it would be the smartest if we are going towards renewable energy, and it wasn't nuclear, it wasn't renewable energy, it was saving energy. So that is really the one that costs the least and that gives immediate return back to the economic investment of energy efficiency and development. The money that people save and not spend on utility bills, they can spend in the community. It's very interesting. It's really the smartest energy that we can access is the one that we can save, and it's an incredibly unaccessed savings potential, money potential. It's direct money for people if they do not have to spend it on utility bills. So it's also empowering for a family to be more independent from those strings. I would like to conclude with four steps that I think could be taken safely politically, but of course that's for you to decide in the direction of implementing energy efficient codes. I think, as I said right now, the energy efficiency with an eye towards conservation is the most important step. Minimize losses first and maximize gains because photovoltaics, energy efficient technology is expensive. There's a lot we can do without a lot of investment upfront financially. And photovoltaics today are still not economically feasible. They have an incredible high upfront investment need, and it's very difficult to recover that investment for a family, for example, over the lifetime of the house. So savings, savings first. In my opinion, that's insulation and passive solar, that kind of, yeah, measures. Secondly, renewable energy, like the installation of photovoltaics. It should be made much easier to net meter, and we should use as a, as a community, the existing grid as a giant storage battery. What makes photovoltaic systems completely impossible to invest in for a family is if they have to buy back a battery. But if it is allowed to net meter, it's completely, at that point, it becomes feasible. And everybody is contributing and sending green energy into the grid, which then can be sold to other people who might not be as fortunate and they don't have any solar I would also suggest very aggressive subsidies that have, we have seen that in Europe and Austria. The Austrian government subsidizes every passive house that is being built with $30,000, which is an incredible incentive and makes the home cheaper than a home that would be built to normal standards. And then lastly, I think I would like to see Urbana adopt and make it, well, people have to... have to comply with it, some, an energy code. And the best that I've seen so far or found on the EPA website, that was the International Energy Conservation Code. It's, they have a very good tool on the website. It's completely oriented towards different climate zones. So if you go to that website, if you look on Chicago, even climate zone, it gives you very specific directions on how much insulation in the walls, in the ceiling, underneath of the slab, what type of windows. They are encouraging people to use very high, highly energy efficient windows. So those are the ideas that I had towards implementing energy efficiency, and thanks for inviting me.
Yeah, thanks, Ken. Any questions from committee members? Yeah, Robert.
Ricky, we just implemented the International Building Codes. How far behind are they?
Well, behind what?
The Energy Conservation.
The International Energy Conservation Code. You know what? I have to pass on that one. I think it's probably pretty close because I've been dealing with such high insulation levels. It's even for me difficult to keep up with those different systems. I find it very confusing. I don't even know, like LEED has now nine different certifications, like one for residential, one for operational. I don't know how anybody is going to keep track of what relates to what, really. It would also be good to come up with some comparable system where somebody could say like, hey, what can I do? If there was a flyer that would explain to people the difference of the different rating systems, maybe in terms of actual energy usage, not just in like platinum or silver.
Okay. And I think if you hold that question and ask it again, staff might have an answer too. When they talk about the Illinois Energy Conservation Code and how that matches with the EPA's version. Any other questions from committee members? Okay, thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, our next topic is the Green Building Energy Conservation Code update from Community Development Services. I think we have again Dr. Tyler and Gordon Skinner, our Building Safety Manager, here to tell us about the Illinois Code and about green building progress here in Urbana. Take it away, Dr. Tyler.
Hi, good evening again. As our memo showed, we are on the International Energy Conservation Code. And we went through the background of how we got to it, and we just adopted the new code. While adopting the new code for 2003, we, at that time, made sure that we also adopted the Illinois Energy Conservation Code, which is at the request of the state. They require us to do that, so we're on that. And I recently talked to the Capital Development Board, and they are going to be adopting the 2006 International Conservation Code, which we will automatically be on because we have adopted that by reference in our adopting ordinance. So we will be there in the next two or three months, is what they told me. You know what, J-Car. And then the International Residential Code has an energy code chapter for all residences of one or two families. So we're there. And we, of course, this is only for new construction additions and remodels. So it's not for existing, and people who want to save energy have a lot of different things that they can do in their own individual homes and existing homes. I'm sure that we're not going to be able to apply our codes to, but it would be certainly something that we would encourage people to do. And you know, as part of our package, we gave you a list of, from the green building rating systems and about LEEDs, and then from the Green Building Council, they had a very interesting, to me at least, because it opened my eyes even, section on homes and what you can do, sixteen things, sixteen ways to green your home. All of which applies a lot to existing homes and it's a cheaper way, and some things that you can do cheaply to, you know, just plugging air leaks in the building envelope. And then, of course, if you buy the, now available for new furnaces and new air conditionings, they all have standards. They're all incorporated in the energy code that they have to meet. And for lighting, and for a lot of lighting, the same thing is happening is that there's new codes that are being applied to energy for, energy use for lighting. So those are the things really that we have in the building code. And I think we went over, or we just listened to a little bit about the green building and LEEDs that was also, we tried to give you a little bit of an idea of what we've done as staff in the LEEDs, and we've had different people on staff go to conferences and learn some things.
Well, just to supplement the good news that we are now, as of just a month ago, on the latest version of the Energy Conservation Code, the international code, and that does include commercial and residential buildings, and it includes new construction as well as major additions. So this is thanks to the International Council and State of Illinois and our own actions in staying up to date. So that's good news. I think we're also very well positioned from a policy standpoint to pursue more green building and energy conservation. We have very good backing in our comprehensive plan focusing on that with implementation strategies, council goals to wreck this, and in particular, some special projects we've been working with. In addition to the affordable housing that Ecolab's been developing, which is high energy efficiency, and later on tonight, we'll be looking at an annual action plan with their third project locally. There's a second project on Kerr Avenue that will be more of a model community and have several homes, we hope, with a green community focus as well as energy conservation. And we've retained foreign associates as green architects to help us in the design of that. Next month, we'll be having a charrette to really get going on the design process. I know that they're studying the housing market currently as a first step in their program. We've also, in working with Brimshaw developers and the Crystalview Townhomes, have emphasized our desire to see more green building aspects in that development, which does have substantial city involvement as well. And in response to our requests, they are looking at installing geothermal energy as part of that. So we are well positioned. We do have some exciting projects that have been developed with our partners and coming up. Gordon mentioned the tour that Brandon put together, I think it was late 2005 already. So it's, okay, so it's been a while, and it's, you know, every time we learn about these things, it kind of percolates for a while, and I think good things come out of that. We have used a lot of opportunities to encourage green design and projects that we work with, suggestions, incentives. Just tonight, I heard some council members suggest this to Carl, and in fact, there's a whole other field, green building for medical institutions. And as we've attached information on LEED, we've attached what the University of Illinois is doing. We do, and the community finally have a LEED certified building. I'm sure that we will have more. You may not know, the LEED index or program's not yet quite developed for residential subdivisions in housing, but they have a model, kind of a test that's out there, and that was used by some students who studied the Kerr Avenue site. So they tested that against LEED, and that was pretty exciting to see use of a tool that isn't even out there for the general public. And we felt the students did a wonderful job in looking at that property as well as the Crystalview Townhomes. Twenty-thirty Challenge, that's another really exciting initiative. It's bold, and that would be, you know, something I know Katrina and other architects locally have picked up that challenge, and it would be great to see government work alongside these forward-thinking architects on that specific challenge. I think that's all we have so far tonight, and I know there will be more discussion in the next item as well.
Yeah, what questions do staff have on this topic, or do council members have for staff on this topic? Danielle?
I actually have a topic which Public Works might be able to better answer, and it has to do with the extent to which we've installed LED and compact fluorescent lights in both our streetlights and our facilities, and looking at energy conservation, not just the green building portion of the conversation.
Can we save that for the Sustainable Urbana discussion just a bit? Are there any particular questions or comments on this Energy Conservation Code and Green Building piece? Okay, maybe if there aren't, we can switch into the next topic, the discussion, this Sustainable Urbana discussion. I have a few slides. I'm going to step over there and show really quick just to give the background of what's happened so far very briefly, and then open up the floor to all of these topics. Thanks, Charlie. Okay, if we get the screen turned on. So the quick introduction about Sustainable Urbana and all the things we've doing, we've been doing. As you probably know, there's one of the council goals, I think it's number six, is to reduce Urbana's environmental footprint and waste stream and expand recycling. And as part of that goal, that's about two years old now, there were four particular bullet points that we created, some specific action items we asked, and it suggested the city move ahead on. I won't run out of battery power, don't worry. That we study and implement green building guidelines, incentives, energy conservation improvements, and environmentally friendly Public Works, that we implement recycling of bottles and paper downtown, target construction debris, and support hazardous waste collection. And there's been lots of interesting progress to date. The energy efficient affordable housing, especially this house here, is one of the homes built by Ecolab, completed in Urbana just in the fall. A house that uses ten percent of standard heating and cooling energy, as we heard, is pretty revolutionary. And a whole affordable model green neighborhood, the Kerr Avenue neighborhood, for which the design is underway by foreign associates. And besides that, there's been lots of private activity too. The U of I doing green building and Urbana's first straw bale home by New Prairie Construction, the bicycling and walking encouragement the city's been doing, and things like the growing farmer's market or the growth of our youth cycle program. There were lots of great educational opportunities, the trip to Chicago for the green building trip to see the Chicago Center for Green Technology and Prairie Crossing, and to the Sustainable Cities Symposium up at DePaul this last December. And lots of topics about sustainability have risen to prominence at planning institutes and other places. Here's Prairie Crossing, and Station Square is a building we drove by and saw when we were all there. The mayor and Charlie and a couple others were on the trip to see this sustainable model neighborhood. This is a mixed-use development at a Metro stop in a neighborhood where they set aside a bunch of land to preserve as prairie. And so this is, those buildings that we saw going up when we were there. And in Chicago, at the Lieutenant Governor's Sustainable Cities Symposium, this was an example of what Aurora did. The City of Aurora has a city fleet project to convert to E85 and B20 biodiesel, and so they were doing a comparison burn to show what it looks like to burn ethanol compared to normal fuel. And they say you could see in the smoke, there's less soot and less carbon. Well, there is a lot less carbon burnt when you burn ethanol. Aurora's done a lot to convert over fifty vehicles in their fleet and reduce carbon output of their fleet by something like forty percent. And they also have a no idle policy that we all got to hear about at this conference that the mayor and I and Dennis and some other staff and others attended, a no idle policy that they got from East Hartford. And we heard a lot of other great stories like iGo car sharing in Chicago, where instead of owning a car, you can own a share of a car. And when you need to use a car, go online and schedule it and pick it up at some stop in your neighborhood and have one share of a car that you use when you have to go to the doctor or go out for groceries. So we heard about a lot of great things there, and at this point, I just want to open the floor up to committee members to hear briefly their suggestions and maybe not a lot of debate or critical feasibility questioning of each other, because in the future, we'll have time for staff to tell us what's feasible and not, and what might work. But instead, to just sort of bring ideas forward tonight and add them to the list of things that we might make a motion that staff would look into. Charlie was the first hand I saw, so Charlie, go right ahead.
Yeah, well, if you'll turn to my, to the item I handed out, and I actually have copies for anybody who wants them in the audience. The flip side of what's coming around. The first item I had was to direct staff to look at, sorry?
This makes it you passed out.
Yeah, to look at the design of a green roof for portions of the city building that might be able to handle it, to begin discussions with the Urbana Free Library about doing the same with their new roof. My interest is, of course, in if you can extend the life of a roof from twenty years to sixty years by converting it to a green roof, we should seriously look at the conversion. I also wonder what we can do with the Civic Center, if anything. We clearly need to do a cost-benefit analysis of it because putting a green roof is fairly expensive, and talking to Katrina, you know, we need to know whether it really is worthwhile doing. But I'd like to know. Another, along the same lines, you know, one of the things that a green roof brings you is it deals with runoff, for example. It might be more effective to simply require that parking lots be made of permeable surfaces. So a cost-benefit analysis of this might be very appropriate. The other, the other major issue I have is one that would extend recycling, much as we have for homes and apartments, to the business sector where nothing organized currently exists. Many businesses have individual contracts and such, and my suggestion would be to look at the Portland Metro model as a starting point on how they do business recycling and to ask staff to organize a town hall style meeting with our haulers and recyclers about how to expand into this sector. The Portland Metro model basically mandates that any garbage hauler serving the commercial sector provide recycling services to their clients. The Portland Metro also has innovative home programs too, much, they go much beyond curbside. They even have a compost pickup service now, though I haven't checked on its status in the last year. Another item, of course, which I mentioned earlier, is providing for ways within our code for making the use of photovoltaics and other alternative energy sources much easier for the typical homeowner. And along those same lines, I think we need to develop an aggressive outreach program for educating and showing those, showing homeowners how to meet some of these suggestions, or the sixteen suggestions of the, that are in one of the websites that we were given tonight. You know, maybe we can develop a series of workshops with actual hands-on how to do some of these things that, you know, like improving the insulation around your windows, glazing your windows, those can all be very, fairly effective, you know, repairing your storm windows, that sort of thing, that can all improve energy efficiency. So those are, those are the things I'd like to throw out there to begin with.
Great. Danielle?
Yeah, Brandon, first, thanks for kind of creating a forum in which we could brainstorm out some of these things. I think that before even necessarily talking about all the various things we could do, and there's lots of things that communities have done, I think that we have to set a target, and these things become part of the plan towards that target, and that we implement the plan and we monitor its assessment. So that's the framework I'd really like to see us do. And that's not a unique framework, and in particular, on the issue of energy conservation, the US Conference of Mayors, and I sent this to the mayor for further discussion, the US Conference of Mayors has a climate protection initiative, and if you go to coolmayors.com, it mentions three hundred mayors who represent fifty million Americans who have agreed to meet or beat the Kyoto Protocol targets. And so there's a couple of cities like ours in terms of them being smaller, or college cities, Athens, Georgia, Ashland, Wisconsin, Ann Arbor, Michigan, et cetera, in addition to the big ones like Seattle, which has really led the way in terms of this Conference of Mayors. And they specifically state how important it is to do, actually, the first step is inventory and assessment so that you have a baseline. And I think even as a city, we can look back, say, in 2000 and start at that point because we have done some things that we would include in our because we have done some things that, that we would include in our progress and then move forward from there. So, so I would say first and foremost, we need to decide what our target is. And then, as opportunities arise, we take advantage of those opportunities. And different opportunities will exist at different times. When gas prices go up, all of a sudden, there are certain opportunities on that, and to some degree, requirements. Okay, so with that said, here's just my list without a whole lot of commentary. Reforestation, I would really like to see the arborist come forward with some additional ideas to adding to our forest stock. Incentives for building green, you mentioned the PUD, but we should also look at the subdivision code and what we could do for commercial developments. I'm talking so much cash as trades, as narrower streets, alternatives to pavements, as allowable if certain green initiatives are taken on, and also the possibility of some tax leveling. So, you know, keeping the equalized assessed value, or at least the taxes on that at some fixed rate for five years if people build green. The library upgrades for energy efficiency. I recently looked at how much energy a library uses and compared it, say, to the Independent Media Center, which is a big energy sieve, and actually, a library is not doing so well in terms of energy efficiency. And I think we have to look at comparables. I sent a long document to Bruce Walden, which I'd be happy to share, and I believe Bill Gray, I'd be happy to share with council about how we could, when we look at building a shared maintenance facility with Champaign for our Public Works Department, how we could include a biodiesel, small biodiesel factory as a piece of that. What I mean by that is recycling grease from places like Kraft, which produces a lot of grease, using that grease to recycle, make into biodiesel that then can be used in Champaign or Urbana and sold to the MTD and the school buses. There's a large initiative on the part, on the national level to get school buses to convert to biodiesel, so we should look at that. In terms of our low-income housing, we've been doing a lot of single-family houses. And I think we need to really look at duplexes and triplexes. I know we're looking at that with the Lakeside Terrace replacement. But we need to do more of the duplexes and triplexes, because they allow certain levels of efficiency that the single-family homes don't allow for. With construction debris, my question is, we've been talking about this for six years. Where is the plan? I'd like to hear from our environmental manager. I don't want to bring this issue up again without actually hearing from him. I feel like we've made it very clear through a council goal mandate that we need to hear from him on construction debris, and we have not heard from him. And I'm frustrated about that. LED and compact fluorescent lights, again, it would be useful to know to what extent we have incorporated that. I know we got a grant from the state to incorporate LED into some of our streetlights. And we, but I don't know how much, what percentage of our streetlights actually use LEDs, if it was a small amount or a larger amount, and how we could expand that. And the last thing is in talking to a green developer in town who has wanted to do things like grasscrete instead of driveways. They, there's, there's no real code that allows that or doesn't allow that, at least back when, so it was a few years ago. Perhaps the new codes do allow that. So, some way of allowing permeable surfaces, and us taking the initiative to make that easy for people to do instead of having to have the developer take the initiative and then we kind of learn. And on that lines, this is my last thought, is professional development, professional development, professional development. I think we should send our staff to every corner of the world and see what is happening in different parts of the U.S. and the world, because there are lots of people doing really interesting things. And our staff need to have hands-on experience with this. We've done some things in terms of Chicago. I think we could go a lot further, and I fully support additional training and professional development, because I think that's essential to us being a progressive city on all fronts.
Thanks. Okay, Robert, and then Dennis. Robert?
All those things, but there are some practical aspects of looking at, for example, recycling. And we had a gentleman come to the city council not too long ago and could not get his tenants to participate. I think, obviously, there needs to be some kind of incentive for people to participate. Why should I get rid of this? I mean, people don't have a, don't place a value to it for some reason. And maybe an incentive program to get them to recycle would be worthwhile. When it comes to our existing ordinances, I know we have a lot of out-of-date ordinances that would, that needs to be addressed before we can get into some of the. Just going to have to take a hard look at the new codes, how they relate to the older buildings, and that's where the big issues are in terms of energy efficiency. And I think if they were to look into those old ordinances, I know they'll find a lot of things that we would need to address upfront before we move on down the road in terms of setting priorities and, and all that. So, those are the areas I think we need to look at critically. My constituents called me the other day about recycling, and they had some concerns about, and that's why education is very important, because I ran a few tests for myself. I put some cans out that had a little symbol right on it, and the guy put them back in the can. And I couldn't understand why, but it has to do with education, of course. And they need to understand what they're dealing with, and what items they can pick up, what kind, you know, what they need to be able to do. And if our contractors are not upholding their end in terms of recycling the items that people put out for them, my understanding is, one of the contractors told the tenant, or told the resident, that they weren't going to do that. They want those plastic bags. And if that's the case, then that contractor needs to be addressed by us. And if that case exists throughout our community, he doesn't need to be in a contract with the city of Urbana. So, I think there's a lot of issues, like similar issues like that are out there. People don't really pay a lot of attention to. And education is very important to understand what recycling is all about.
Okay. Thanks. Dennis?
Well, some of the council members have really laid out extremely excellent concepts to follow through and to look into. So, I'm not going to duplicate, you know, those thoughts. I did go to the Sustainable Cities Symposium, and there were a couple of interesting things that were discussed up there that I would pass along as possible leads for us to consider. And then just maybe add a few of my own. You know, and they talk so much about what Chicago has done. There's a huge city, you know, giant metropolitan area, metropolitan area. And they adopted a goal called Zero Waste City, where they're trying to actually recycle as much as possible back into, you know, reusable energy and materials. And one of the things that they did is that they said that they have all 600 of the Chicago public schools are required to recycle. And I'm, I don't know what our school district does for that kind of an effort. But if we, that might be one thing we might look into, to, to make sure that all of the players within our city are starting to think and having, having a progressive concepts about materials and recycling uses. And get, you know, all of our city partners in on the concept of zero, zero waste. One of the things that would really help would be to have a list, and this is educational materials, like that 16 points to how to, how to green your home, you know, and it has to do with like, you know, very simple steps, turning off lights, replacing bulbs, and things like that. To me, originally, when I saw that list, I thought, this is so miniscule. How can anything happen? How can this really affect anything? I thought you had to build a straw bale home to have, you know, really effective. So, if it's true that very small tasks or steps can, can change significantly in environmental, energy levels of your home, then we should have a really good educational program to do that. I'd like to see the city codes evaluated. Chicago, Chicago had a plan where one of their employees looked at the city codes, and they identified 175 barriers that would inhibit or make more, just more, more difficult to achieve green construction. And so, there might be a similar review of our own city codes to identify places where alternative energy sources, like Kristin's, if I'm remembering your correct name, to put up a solar panel in a backyard, might be real evaluated. We can make a more friendly environment for those kinds of adoptions. They also said that as far as wind, wind energy production, Illinois ranked 16th in the nation for wind energy creation, and that it was actually ahead of California. I totally, I thought that was totally unbelievable, but if it's true, it would be wonderful to dedicate some of our power purchases to, or if we can do that, if we can allocate any kind of like distribution of our power purchases to wind farms in Illinois, and to support them locally in our, in our county. And the last thing is, I guess, here's a thought. They discussed stormwater catchment. And it's a program where you, from the roofs or from the parking lots of large construction buildings, new construction, that they have a system of capturing the first half inch of rainfall that occurs. And what it's done is it's put into a big container, and then it's pumped out, and it's used to take care of all the sanitary water system in the building, like toilet flushing and all that. It's already kind of secondary, it doesn't require to be super purified, and you're catching it from the heavens and you're reusing it. And my final thing was that I would love to see a Kerr Avenue project proposed by the Straw Bale Construction Firm in town. I would love to see a street of Straw Bale Construction Homes in Urbana as a model of that kind of alternative construction. We have one on Main Street that's a residence. They do say that the initial cost for a home to be built is slightly higher than, but that the savings are tremendous. And I'm wondering if we built seven or eight, if we had a project to do such, and it was conceivable that we could pool the construction costs and come up with a model Straw Bale Street. Anyway, these are ideas, we're just brainstorming, and we have time, plenty of time ahead of us.
Okay, any other committee members?
I have three brief ones to add to the list. The, just that we examined the models of Aurora's fleet and the no idling policy that saved them all the gas and carbon output. The natural planting idea, that when we plant gardens and downtown flower scapes and medians, that we use plants that don't have to have so much water or fertilizer or daily attention. That way, we could make more of the city lovely if we had stuff that didn't take as much intense watering every day. And lastly, the car sharing idea. I know that, I've heard, Champaign and the university are also considering the car sharing concept and trying to figure out whether they can bring somebody to town who's done car sharing before. And I just want to ask that we add that to the list and encourage our staff to be part of that communication. Those are my three. Any others? Charlie?
I know you've got a suggestion on the back of the report on how to proceed with this, including a guest speaker coming next week. What, what kind of, oh yeah, okay, you've got a motion here. We've, we've had our brainstorming session, you're directing staff to, to move forward with this. So, I guess I'm ready to move on this motion. I assume in committee is all we really need to do on this one, right? Or do you want to save it for next week?
I was suggesting sending it, my suggestion was this motion, that, you know, tonight was our brainstorming time, that we ask staff in the next three months to have a similar brainstorming time amongst themselves, and then to do a little assessment roughly of the feasibility of some of these suggestions and report back to council in July of this summer. So, I'd actually like to send that to council, because next week, we do have one more speaker, Leslie McCain, who will speak exactly, Dennis, on what you had mentioned, the, the wind and renewable energy aspect of this that we heard about.
Okay. I'd move to send this to council, then.
Okay.
The motion.
Okay, so that motion's on the floor. Dennis, I saw your hand, too. What? Go ahead.
I guess, I mean, if we were going to evaluate all of these plans, I mean, there's so many, and they go in so many directions, I just would kind of like to hear from staff what they think, considering their current staffing, as far as like achieving, you know, a first step toward this. It could be mind-boggling, and I just don't know what, I mean, we're all interested in pursuing it. What's feasible from the staff level at this point?
My, my brief comment would be that, yeah, I, the way I tried to word the motion was really that, yeah, we ask staff to, because this is, you know, goal number six, and we have lots of other great, important stuff we're working on, and higher goals that we're putting energy into. That staff really do a rough, quick sort of what's feasible and what's not list, and tell us, okay, these things are in and these things are out, and then we can spend more energy on the things that are in, and the things that have feasibility or have showable examples that we can accomplish. So, so I'd ask staff to spend, you know, we spent an hour, to spend about that amount of time having a similar brainstorming, and then decide on some things that are feasible, so that we really focus our energy in the right place.
And keeping in mind that an incremental approach is appropriate.
Yeah.
Let's not bite off the whole elephant, I think. Incremental is good, and work our way toward, toward the end.
Heather, I saw your hand up, too. Okay. Any other comments? Charlie?
Well, that mayor's, the Cool Mayor site is now up to 400 cities representing 67 million people. I'd like to see us join that, so.
Thanks.
Was there a second to my motion?
Yeah, Robert did second the motion. So, the motion on the table is that we send this to council. Any other questions, comments, input? Okay, hearing none. Were all those in favor of sending us off to council? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, we're done with that for this evening. That'll be on the agenda next week, and we'll have our last speaker then. Next, tonight, we have a resolution from Public Works for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. This is the 2007 Motor Fuel Tax Resurfacing Project. It's Resolution 2007-04-007R, and we have Bill Gray, our Director of Public Works, here to tell us about it. Bill?
Pretty much an annual request, and this is for the use of motor fuel tax dollars to use for road construction work this coming summer. In your packet is a list of the streets that we have planned. The actual plans and specifications are down at IDOT, and we're waiting their review of that. And pending approval of this resolution and their approval, we'll be going out for bid so that we can construct this coming summer. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Bill? Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I know that we're applying for a grant to do parts of Goodwin Avenue, but is there any way to get some of that started this year in particular? I'm interested in, in the little business section on Nevada and Oregon, you know, in front of Bread Co. in Timponi's and around to Manolos. I don't know if it's possible to get the sidewalks expanded, the curb bump outs done there so that those folks can, can take advantage of sidewalk café space and so on.
Well, that actually is pretty much at the heart of the grant that we're applying for, and we should know in a couple of months if we receive that grant. It's about $560,000 we're applying for, and if we're successful, then we'd be putting together the plans and specifications for 2008 construction.
Okay. Another question I have is, how will, this might be better directed to Jennifer, she might know. The multi-use path on, on races is scheduled to be redone as part of this MFT motion. How are you going to deal with the large trees and the tree roots that have developed along there? A lot, I think a lot of those trees were small and didn't exist when.
Patches. We'll be doing a lot of patching first before we do the overlay.
Okay, so how do you deal with those roots that are?
We'll be going over them.
Going over them? Okay. Okay, and then it's. Okay, and then, it's come to our attention that the university is going to start enforcing traffic regulations for bicyclists, which will be interesting to see what exactly they plan on doing. One of the problems I see that they have is a tendency of their bike paths to, on campus, to have abrupt transitions into, into things like paths that end at a one-way street where the traffic is coming at you and, which is a very dangerous situation. The one I've complained about before is Gregory- has been done and now the street has been narrowed with a fence on one side as they do construction of Gregory two. I'd like to know if there's any way we can intercede with the university and the construction company to at least get a one-way northbound bike lane put in there so that bikes can, you know, bikes can go south, no problem with traffic along there, but there's no way for bikes to go north legally without putting themselves in danger there. And so, if there's some way to make enough space to mark a bike lane for northbound bikes there, that'd be very useful because as it stands right now, you either have to go to Lincoln Avenue or over to Goodwin and we know students aren't going to do that because they're going to, you know, they're coming from Allen Hall or Cersei or FARPAR and heading for Illinois Street Residence Hall and campus there or vice versa. And so, if we can do something there, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
So, point of information, when Gregory Place Two construction is completed-
Right.
-that street will become two-way.
Any other questions? Okay, a motion would be in order that we might send this to council?
I'd like to move this forward to council-
Second.
-for approval.
Okay, Lynn and Charlie seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion will be seen next week at council. Thank you, Bill. Next, we have an ordinance from the Community Development Services. This is an ordinance approving the City of Urbana and Urbana-Champaign-Champaign County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2007-08 Annual Action Plan. Ordinance number 2007-04-034 and we have John Schneider here to tell us about it.
Good evening. It's basically an update of what we reviewed with you earlier in the year. This ordinance we're requesting that you review and give us input regarding our proposed annual action plan. On March 9th, 2700 announced the allocations for this year for the Home Investment Partnership Program and Community Development Block Grant Funding. The funding, the overall bill, the Senate bill was kept at the same level as it had been for the last year, but they added, they actually added six entitlement communities so that stretched the money farther. The impact, basically, excuse me, Community Development Block Grant Funding has been allocated in the amount of $478,079 and the home program funding in the amount for the consortium, which consists of the City of Champagne, Urbana and Champagne County, $1,041,394, which, and also, that does not include the allocation of $23,528 in American Dream Down Payment Initiative, which is a very popular program. And we're hoping to see it pick up in Urbana, it's a down payment for first-time home buyers. But, what's happened is, over the last four years, our Community Development Block Grant Funding has been reduced and we are, our action plan still has, we try to keep our funding for our programs at the same level, keep our traditional programs such as housing rehab and things of that nature. We are meeting our 20% administrative cap. Program delivery funding is allocated for staffing to deliver the programs for the people in the community, the emergency grant, the access grant program, the senior repair program, and also Lakeside Terrace. We've allocated $50,000 in CDBG and $50,000 in home funding to meet our basic council's commitment to the redevelopment of Lakeside Terrace and the Crystal View Townhomes. And in that, you also note that we indicate in our plan that geothermal is going to be part of the consideration for the redevelopment of that project. Our public service funding, we have a 15% cap for Community Development Block Grant Funds and that, the total is $71,711, of which $47,700 is basically for personnel and programming for our transitional housing program. We use $7,500 in CDBG and we have allocated $7,500 in the NIF program for the neighborhood cleanup, which leaves a balance for consolidated social service funding of $16,500. When we presented this, the update in the beginning, I think it was in January, we thought we would only have $15,000. We were able to move some funding around, at least extend it to $16,500 for our consolidated social service funding programs. We're suggesting public facilities and improvements, $1,125 to Women's Fund for window repair on their current facility. The Urbana Park District for Community Garden Waterline for Victory Park in the amount of $15,694. Disabled Citizens Foundation, $25,000 to help expand their Clark Road Vocational Training Site, which we funded part of their acquisition, probably, I think it was two or three years ago. And also, you note that Harvey Street, in this year's action plan for '07-'08, we are requesting an allocation of $75,000, which would be added to $166,057, which is the anticipated carryover from previous years for the Harvey Street and sidewalk program. Then we have carryover projects, as you can see, Lakeside, $50,000 from '05-'06, clearance of slum and blight for acquiring properties and we can provide those once we clear them. Bacon Lots for Habitat for Humanity, other nonprofits such as Ecolab or Homestead for affordable housing development. Similarly, property acquisition in support of new construction. Harvey Street sidewalk improvements, it's there in the carryover numbers. And for the home program, basically, we have tried to maintain, we share the administrative funding with City of Urbana and City of Champagne and Champagne County. We have Community Housing Development Organization projects. This year, HUD requires us to keep a running average of 15% per year and we were a little bit behind in it. So, what we did was we set aside about $312,000 for this year out of this home grant that is allocated to Community Housing Development Organization projects and they have to be projects that produce affordable housing. Ecolab is one of those at $31,000 for a super energy efficient home. Homestead Affordable Housing Program, we've set aside $85,000 for Douglas Park Infill Project, that's in Champagne. The Urban League of Champagne County could be in Champagne, Urbana or the county, is two lease purchase projects. Urban League of Champagne County Development Corporation, their Affordable Six Home Ownership Program, which is proposing to provide six units in Urbana. And then, Chodo Operating, we are suggesting that the Chodo Operating funding be divided among the three agencies equally at $17,356. And then, in the plan, it also includes the City of Champagne projects, which include, with the home funding, full home improvement, lot acquisition, complete the Taylor Thomas Affordable Housing Project, and then their program delivery funds. Champagne County, their total amount is $90,211 for housing rehab and program delivery. And for us, for the City of Urbana, to keep our owner occupied housing rehab steady at the same levels as it's been the last couple of years, $140,000 for that. And then also, you note that we have our Lakeside Redevelopment Home Funding set aside in the plan for this year. And also, we allocate the pro-rata share of the Addy Down Payment Initiative Program in this budget. So, basically, we're asking that you provide input if you have any questions. Maybe I can answer.
Yeah, what questions do you have about these priorities? The mayor and then Charlie. Mayor?
I have a question about the priorities, but on Lakeside Terrace, I wish the university would receive the students that came with the proposal, environmental landscaping, etc. What was the term?
Right, that was-
The question was to get the extensive acceptance of Crystal View Townhomes and they were very far aligned in their process and not that students were late, would you have the possibility to make money?
Well, I think we can present the information, we're actually working with that class still, to try to get, they're putting together some, a booklet of information for FAR and Associates when we have the design suret with FAR. They intend to provide that information to FAR and Associates and we can also provide the same information to Bryn Shore for their, you know, to complete the ideas for their project as well.
Is the timing still there?
Well, as I understand it, we received an email from Linda Folkerson of Bryn Shore that they were reapplying and their application was completed last week. So, I think it's, the application for funding is one thing, I don't even, they just have a preliminary design. So, I think my hope is that we can put, get this information from Brian Professor Deal's class in time to provide it to both these entities.
Great. Charlie?
Yeah, extending the conversation on Lakeside Terrace Redevelopment and B that have failed so far, how soon will we know about this latest application?
I, it seems to me that it was like a quick turnaround time and we were just short three points from getting an award the last time. So, they had to kind of regroup, try to get the other three points and maybe some more. So, I think it's within the next six weeks.
So, we're still sort of on Plan B then?
Right.
Do we have a Plan C?
No, at this point. We're hinging on Plan B that it's going to go through this time.
Okay. With respect to Homestead's infill plans around Douglas Park, since we've been talking about energy conservation here, is there anything in there that requires energy conservation in a significant way?
Well, the home program regulations require that any home constructed with home funding or any rental project meet the current model energy code. In addition, Homestead builds their homes. I think, Jim, do you want to discuss how you meet the energy ratings?
This is Jim Rose from Homestead. Have a seat.
For the three homes we're going to be building in Douglas Park area, we will be using the Model Energy Code as a base level, but these homes we've designed with two-by-six wall, outer wall construction, so we'll be increasing the R value in the outer walls to at least R21, which is more than required by the Model Energy Code. We also do extra energy efficiency in the attic area and the ceilings with blown-in insulation, so, other than that, we did not request, in the past, in the six houses we built at the Easely Lincoln subdivision, if you remember, we had asked for and received some super energy efficiency money from the state of Illinois and the timing was not right for this, for that to happen in this project. That even requires some additional funding on the developer's part to make that happen because those requirements are a lot stricter than even the Model Energy Code, a lot more.
I guess I would, I would ask that you touch base with Katrina and others who might be able to give you some additional efficiency, or energy efficiency ideas that might not be too expensive to incorporate into your existing plans.
Mm-hmm.
That's just, just an idea. If there's some additional savings that can be made, it'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Finally, I'd like to point out that, I asked staff to give me some numbers here, which I think have been passed around. We have had a nearly $100,000 funding change since fiscal year '03-'04 in CDBG funding. And when you stop and think about $100,000 in four years for one city and then you look at how this applies across the country, you can see the magnitude of drop in funding for these kinds of programs that really address some of the issues of the neediest in our communities. I think it's a real shame that, that we've seen such a reduction and we really need to get this turned around. I'd move to send this to council.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any other questions? Danielle?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. I'm interested in, and definitely we're looking at this with the Kerr Avenue property, but having, getting to the point where every single affordable housing project that we do does not go along with the energy standards that we currently have in place in Champagne, Urbana, but is much more along the lines of the energy standards of the passive house. Now, it's not specific to Ecolab, Homestead, Urban League, Ecolab, Habitat for Humanity, any other group that we work with. It's really a disservice actually, in the long run, for us to be building houses that, one, in some cases, just aren't going to last as long as a house like the Fairview House or some of the other houses, and two, that isn't really taking advantage of some existing technology and practices, standard practices for passive house. And so, a couple of things, one is, you know, I'm happy to see what we're doing, I think it's in line with what we've done in the past with a little bit of ecological construction added to that. And I'd like to see it get to the point where everything we're doing is within that realm. And I don't know if that means that Ecolab needs to work with Urban League and Homestead more carefully or what, but I think that we need to, I'd like to see in the future duplexes, triplexes, straw bale, and different kinds of energy efficient measures where we're really looking at a particular energy standard. And there's lots of ways to get to that energy standard and there's lots of different Chodos that can do that, but that we're setting an energy standard for affordable houses. So, I put that out there and I guess the question is, I am a little surprised that we're just doing the single-family home with Ecolab because I know they keep wanting to do duplexes and triplexes where you have much more energy, there's much more energy efficiency. And so, I'm wondering what the, what the conversation had been such that we got to the point where we're doing another single-family home and what's staff's opinion on that?
Well, basically, we take, we take applications and we just, if the, if the application meets our criteria, we take that to the Community Development Commission and recommend approval for that, for those applications. I know that, I think it was last year that Ecolab presented an application for, I think it was a tri, was it a triplex? That we couldn't fund because it was specific to a certain segment of the population, I think it was like, single family-
Single moms.
-single mothers. And I, we can't hone it down to that, you know, target that population. It has to be affordable housing to households whose incomes are at or below 80% of the median. And I'm, you know, I'm sure that if another proposal comes forward, we would look at that. I mean, we've funded, in, the consortium has funded a rehab of an apartment in Champagne, it was like a six-unit apartment or for the Urban League of Champagne County Development Corporation owned. And actually, Kat and I and Randy were talking about this the other day, about how, you know, townhouses and triplexes and quadruplexes and things like that would work out a lot more, provide more energy efficiency. The other thing, for Urban League, I know that they construct their homes to energy star rating and just, in recent, in the recent probably three or four weeks, we've been receiving more emails from HUD stating they're going to have these energy webcasts and, and I guess my hope is that they continue to provide this energy conservation information. With that, they'll provide us more funding so that we can, you know, help agencies like Ecolab and Homestead and those, our Chodos, to provide more energy efficiency for the homes that they build.
I just put it out there that when it comes to, and we should remember as a council, that when it comes to paying the bill every month, sometimes it's half and half. Half of it is mortgage and half of it is the power bill. That's a lot. And if we have the ability to reduce that power bill to something like $20 to $30 a month and not 200, $150 to $200 a month, it just makes no sense that we wouldn't do that. And it, and I don't, I don't think it's good enough necessarily to say we take what comes in the front door. I think we as a city need to say, this is what our standards are and we'll work with you to get to those standards and we'll get partners to work with each other, but this is our standard and our standard is, is this. And I, I continue to look into the energy star rating, the lead, et cetera, and I, I agree with some of the things that Kat has said this evening, that our standard needs to be at a greater level than that, that energy star really is, is just kind of the tip of the iceberg. So, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but it does, it should be that we set a standard and then we figure out how to meet that standard with the different partners we have. And I'd be interested to hear more from Jim Rose in the future, you know, we can sit down and talk, but I, I'm really interested in Homestead, they've done a great job. They've done a great job from a management perspective on what they're working on. And I want to see if we can like, take it to the next step in terms of the, the, the way the homes are constructed and the energy efficiency.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. The motion is that we send this to council. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. We'll see that next week as well. Item this evening is the discussion of Westerbanna parking. And I don't know whether we might have Dolores Seabrecht or Pat Pallotti here to help fill us in on the Westerbanna parking issues. Take it away. Go right ahead, Pat.
There's a memo in, in council packets that speaks to some of the issues that are on Mr. Smythe's proposal for this evening. But it was written in advance of that coming out, so there's no direct correlation. So I apologize for any confusion that is inherent in that. Essentially, the memo that's in council packet speaks against, I should say, rather than to, elimination of the 72-hour or some other time limit restriction, particularly in the Westerbanna area, based upon feedback that we've received from the citizenry. We went through, as the memo outlines, we went through a fairly intensive process a few years ago with a focus group and, and heard pretty loudly and clearly citizen concerns about street parking in the, in the neighborhood. So since, since these two things don't match up, I guess I don't know exactly how you want to proceed. If you, if you want to speak to this in, in order, I can do that or...
Well, I'd say, I mean, Pat, you could give the, you know, any, if you have any other additional brief description of your memo and your recommendations, and if you have any particular presentation or comments on Charlie's proposal, and then we could give a chance for everyone here to ask questions and entertain discussion.
Okay. Well, just specifically on the, on the 72-hour restriction, if you can picture in the Westerbanna neighborhood, in the permit area neighborhood, if you can picture the properties along Lincoln Avenue, those properties, south of Green and north of Pennsylvania or so, the ones that front on the east side of the road, the ones that front on Lincoln Avenue have no on-street parking in front of the properties. So they automatically end up in the first few blocks west or east rather of Lincoln. So that's, you know, where the congestion starts and everything pushes kind of east from there all the way up to Urbana High School where it starts pushing back from the other direction. Similar pressures on the neighborhood. The idea in concise form is that one attractive, let me say before going further, no one likes to receive a parking ticket. I think everybody understands that. But one attractive aspect of the 72-hour enforcement is that in the most congested portions of those neighborhoods, at least with the 72-hour enforcement, you have an opportunity to park in front of your house once in a while if the cars were never compelled to move. In other words, if by virtue of buying a permit, you were able to park your car there and leave it for an indefinite period, assuming you kept it in operable condition, then you would leave it conceivably in front of someone else's house and the person who lives there or their guests would then never have the opportunity. So if, if there's an upside for the neighborhood to enforcement of the 72-hour ordinance, that's what it is. In terms of the, the motions regarding parking, I think those comments essentially addressed the first one. The second one is regarding renewal and, and parking permits. Dolores and I chatted a little bit about this earlier this evening. And I think it's, it's really conceivable that for renewal purposes, things like that could be done, probably, we could probably develop a system for that to happen without too much strain, so the people didn't have to come in. The initial time, however, since permits are resident-only permits, it's a resident-only permit area and we're, we're really fairly tough on that. We try to make sure that permits don't go to people who aren't authorized to purchase them. We probably want the person to come in the first time to match up the address with the person, with the vehicle. And then on renewals, assuming all the information is still the same, renewal is a pretty straightforward process. I think that could be streamlined. Certainly the two-way communication online is something that we can, that we can work on further. There is some informal arrangements that people make by contacting Sean directly for specific events, extended visits or, you know, there's a lot of them out there that she could probably give you more detail on. We could, we could flush that out a little bit more and, and do that online as opposed to only doing it by, you know, by phone call or personal appearance. One, one thing I would point out though, in the, in the paragraph entitled "Some Reasoning," in terms of posting notices, we do that, and I'm sure all of you are intimately familiar with the issues we've had with towing vehicles in the past. We, we're really careful about towing vehicles now. In fact, we really hate to tow vehicles to get them out of our way. So we, we only do that in pretty specific instances. Leaf sweeping is, is the primary one, where we'll post stretches of streets to clean up all the leaves in the fall. Otherwise, for, for routine street sweeping or, or other activities, cars may get tickets, but they don't get towed for, typically for those activities. Those notices go out. The arbitration is very diligent about notifying people in the given area when they're going to be working trimming trees or operations likewise. Does the same thing where they're going to be patching streets or curbs or sidewalks. And then those no parking areas are, are fairly small, only as big as they need to be. But street sweeping for leaf removal is different. That's a, that's a long stretch where, where they really don't want any cars parked on the street. And that's where we've had some, some issues with towing before. And then the third motion, there are two comments on that. One is that it would be a very simple matter for us to identify underperforming meters and, and move to remove them for, for better purposes. In some cases, meters exist in specific locations at the request of an adjacent merchant, for instance. Even though the meters produce virtually no revenue, they do provide customer parking. One good example of that is the business is now unfortunately defunct, but at Lynn and Maine, there, there are a couple of metered parking spaces there that, that generate nothing. Well, the business is closed now, but they're there only because the business owner asked for on-street customer parking that wasn't full. It was secondhand roads. And it's a similar situation adjacent to Dairy Queen, just south of University, on-street meters for, for additional customer parking. However, with the electronic meter auditing equipment that we have now, it's easy for us to identify single spaces just by virtue of calling them up by meter number and seeing what a, what a given space can do. So that's a, that's a fairly straightforward analysis. The other comment on that section is, prior to spending much time in the downtown portion of the parking system doing that, we're embarking now on a downtown parking study that was authorized in the budget for the current fiscal year. We talked about that last year around this time. There's, and, and one of the reasons besides workload that that's, that that's evolving so late in the year is, is that a stated goal of that study, identified goal I should say, is that it mesh with, with everything else. We have a boneyard creek plan, a study area now underway. There's a downtown plan. There's, there's a council initiative for more, you know, after-hours activity in the downtown. There's a whole bunch of things that that ties in together in addition to new and identified development. Of course, there, there may never be a perfect time to pull the trigger on that, but at least right now, a lot of the pieces are in place. So we can, we feel pretty comfortable moving forward with that. So I'd just say that by way of information before we spend a lot of time talking about potential changes downtown, in the very near future, we're going to be spending a lot of time talking about potential changes downtown. And, you know, it seems more appropriate that that be a function of that study.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Questions? Charlie?
Well, see, I'd like to put some motions on the floor. And so what I'd propose doing is taking them in reverse order of what's on here, with the easiest being the third motion. Since I think I have a, a nice way to, to do that one. I'd like to direct staff to include in their current, in their planned parking study, to, as they can, address the, the issue I raised, and identify those that, that could be removed and or converted to our parking limits and so on, just, just to include that review. And also, and I suspect that in the downtown, this, the sections I'm thinking of downtown, in particular Springfield Avenue, there might be, you know, a need for some new meters to be, to be added there. And I'd also like to know why, you know, while we're at it, we, we've had some rental spaces in the past, I know, but we don't do that really anymore. There are some existing rental spaces, for example, around Goodwin and Oregon, some on Goodwin, some on Oregon, I think. I can't remember exactly which ones are left. We've done some of that before. I know Champaign is making considerable amount of money on, on renting spaces in the, in its campus town area. So, you know, I'd just like to include that as part of the discussion. I also know that based on the multimodal study, which we really haven't discussed tonight, but I did have a question for, for Bill Gray on this one later if we get a chance. There is discussion in there of, of parking issues and commuter lots that would be served by existing bus lines that would, and combined with free parking at the edges of our community to minimize traffic onto campus. So I don't know how that fits into the, the, the current parking plan. But if, if these questions could be included in, to the extent possible, in the, in the planned parking study, I'd appreciate it. So I guess my motion is direct staff to include as much of this as they can in the current planned parking study.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay.
And the reason is that I would, I think that the commuter parking lot connected with the bus routes is pretty efficient if it would go, if it would be accepted by students.
Okay, so that's a motion and a second.
I don't think this one really needs to go to, to go to council. This would just be a, a motion out of here. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item? Hearing none. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that carries.
Okay. My second motion would concern the, the parking permit renewal process. I would move, and this again would be a, this would be something that wouldn't need to go to council. I would move that staff examine the feasibility of and report back to us in a timely fashion, a web-based permit renewal system for those who have already registered in person for a specific vehicle. This would be modeled after the rental registration program, which is supposed to work in much the same fashion.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Lynn. Any questions or... Okay, hearing none. But all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
I guess, I guess there's something in there if they can develop a web reporting system for people who need to park their cars for extended periods of time that, you know, develop a contact system, that, that might be a, another piece of that. So, okay, the complicated one is, is, goes back to something we tabled portions of. Parking had proposed some changes last year. I'd like to revisit that topic. I think those had to do with what, what constituted moving a vehicle for the purposes of meeting the 72-hour rule. And, you know, my own opinion is the 72-hour rule isn't long enough, is a, is a, not a long enough time. And given that we want people driving less, walking, biking, and taking the bus more, penalizing folks for parking clearly working and functional cars or vehicles seems counterproductive to the kind of energy-saving policies the city espouses. I think it's particularly insulting for those who pay for the privilege of parking on the street in some parts of our community. So here's my reasoning, and I'll give that before I make the motion. In the permit area, the city currently has to put up no parking notices when the streets need to be cleaned, period. I own, I've, I've had a permit, in fact, I have a permit now for the car I have left because I moved the one I had. I used, I had to park one car on the street and one car in the driveway because that's all the room I have, because all my bikes are in the garage. So I have had a car on the street and it always parked in the same place. It got moved, but it always parked under the same tree. And because I can't park in front of my house because it's the wrong side of the street, it's always parked in front of my neighbor's house under the tree on his street. It's always in the same spot. Now, if I happened to be around and I heard the, and I heard the, the street cleaner come around, I'd try to move it into the driveway, even if it, you know, just barely fit or something, so that they could clean the street. Most of the time I missed, but, but I tried. My point is that that car didn't move while public works was out there. And I give two examples here of typical behavior that I see in the neighborhood because I live in the permit parking area. The first scenario is I park a car in front of my house or nearby, in or out of the permit area. This one really doesn't matter. And I go to work every day in that vehicle. And so, more or less on a regular basis. Sometimes I might ride the bus or, or take my bike on a nice day or something like that. But anyway, the car is off the street during public works' working hours on a regular basis. Basically, the car is used a lot. Okay, so it's, it, it gets turned over and there's no problem. The more common scenario in my neighborhood is actually this one. I'm a student, a staff, faculty, or I happen to live in, in this permit zone, and my, and I don't use my car during the week, basically. My car sits 24/7 except when I run errands. Most of my errands are on the weekend, unless of course you have a teenage son who uses the car all the time. But anyway, during the school or, or work week, I usually bike, walk, take the bus to work or school. Every Wednesday night, I go out and drive my car around the block and park in the same spot, wasting five minutes of gasoline and 10 minutes of my time. Okay? The car is on the street during public work, working hours. It's basically, the car is used little or rarely when public works wants to get out there and clean the street. And that's why they developed the system of putting up sections of that part of the community with no parking so they can get out there and clean the streets. Okay, that's the solution to this. The 72-hour rule is basically arbitrary. You look at the cities that are listed, yes, a lot of them use 72 hours. I suspect it's totally arbitrary. Some of them use 40. Some of them use 48 hours, some of them use a little longer time period. But basically, it's an arbitrary time period, and it basically lets you enforce a situation where a car gets abandoned. And I don't disagree with that aspect of this. But I think that because a lot of the vehicles in the Westerbanna neighborhood get used on the weekends, we shouldn't be forcing people to get out there in the middle of the week and move their car and just park in the same spot. And I know that cars park in the same spot because I do it, and I go by a number of cars that are parked every day on my way to work because I bicycle through the same three or four streets that all have cars on the street, and you can just go down and you say, "Okay, there's the silver car, there's the pickup truck with that license plate, there's the pickup truck with that license plate." They all park in the same spot every day. They go around the block and park it back to meet the requirements. So I would move, on that grounds, that direct staff to bring back fine-tuning the parking ordinance that they want, but we haven't done yet, but to include the following, that for those that have permits, allow those parking, those with parking permits to park on the street without having to move as long as the car is maintained and in clearly working order. No flat, in other words, no flat tires, it's licensed and registered, there are no broken windows, and generally, it's cleared of debris over the car. And to increase the length of parking in a single period for non-permit parkers to from 72 hours to five days. That's my motion.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Oh, that one doesn't have any support, so.
Do other council members have questions or discussion on this issue?
I have. Um, has it, tell me how much it costs, what a ticket is for 72 hours or more. Okay. And a permit is $135 for a year.
For a year.
Okay. I could support a motion that exempt cars with permits as long as if there was a need of snow removal or leaf removal that they comply. I couldn't support a motion that extended from 72 hours to five days for non-permit parkers because, not, non-permit cars because of the climate of the campus, and I just think that what I've read here is, it just would make me real nervous that people would just park their car on the street for five days and maybe come back to it, and if, you know, they had a ticket, they'd pay $15 and/or, you know, not. And I just, I guess I couldn't support something that, for a non-permit parker for five days, that's not something I could support. I could support one, a motion that if you have a permit, that as long as you've moved your car for leaf removal and snow removal, and we're using alternative methods of transportation, I could support something like that.
I'm supportive of the status quo in terms of what the staff has recommended in their memo. Seems like this is something that they've worked with for a while. In 2002, there was a focus group involved in, you know, helping to make these decisions. And I think the 72-hour, you know, there's probably no perfect hour amount. I mean, you know, 48, you know, maybe it's too short, you know, four or five days, too long, 72 is kind of in the middle. But I think it works, you know, it works as well as it probably can. It's not ideal. I agree that there's issues with people just driving around and changing it, you know, maybe an inch or something, moving it. But I'm supportive of sticking with what we have now because I don't, I think there's been some isolated concerns, but I don't see enough swell of support for any change.
Danielle?
It's, your motion didn't get a second, but there might be aspects of it that would be supported, which is why I think it merits conversation. The, having gone through that parking study with the former mayor and having represented more the neighborhood you're referring to than the neighborhood I represent now, I would need to feel as though that the neighborhood close to campus had a fairly clear consensus on this before I felt comfortable moving forward. So that's the concern. So if, if I felt that, you know, this was tested on Wuna and I could email some of my neighbors who aren't necessarily on Wuna because they're more north of that area, and we could get that sense, I would feel more comfortable. Secondly, I'm a little concerned about thinking about the Wuna neighborhood, but actually legislating for the whole city. So that's the second concern. And the third is, in particular with this motion, I generally support an increase in the length to a longer period of time. I'm concerned about permit owners, or, you know, those with permits being able to park for as long as they need to, you know, for the entire year if necessary, because I just don't see the mechanism public works would have to deal with some of the things they have to deal with. Like, that piece isn't in this picture yet. So some of the concerns I have, but mostly, I really was very careful in terms of parking changes before, and I'm fairly cautious about parking changes at this time. But that is not to say I wouldn't support them.
Other comments?
If I could address some of that.
Yeah, Charlie?
Yeah, I have bounced this around some of the Wuna members individually, but I can take it more public. And I, you know, this is, this was in here for discussion, not to actually send something to council, so I would, I will, I will go out there and see what people are comfortable with. I feel strongly that most of those cars get used. Okay? It is the rare car that gets abandoned, and I think that by putting in language about flat tires, licensed and registered, no broken windows, and generally cleared of debris, that indicates that the car is being cared for. And because of the way it works currently, that they, that city has to go, the city has to basically put in no parking, special no parking periods through that neighborhood, and that, to get fairly well-publicized, you know, put it out to web, but, you know, one of the issues of having a database for emails is basically to be able to email a list and say, "Okay, you know, we know you have a sticker, you're on the street, you know, we're going to be doing no parking zones this, this, here, and here." We should be publicizing that with direct email to those, to those people. So maybe as part of the second motion that we talked about, that can be developed. But it strikes me that I am trying to address that concern, and that I'm also trying to address the concern of having some kind of a limit. But I feel very strongly that if we really are trying to conserve energy, we shouldn't be telling somebody to just go out and drive the car around the block to meet those, and this comes from the language that was being specified in the amendments that they wanted to bring up, which was basically, you know, you had to put so much mileage on your odometer if they could see it. Well, a lot of these electronic odometers, you can't see at all anyway, they're off when the car's off. So that's going to be pretty useless, but, you know, they mark the chalk on the tire. I've seen people go out and just simply wash the chalk off. I know that that's what one neighbor does, you know, so that, yeah, well, I'm not going to mention names, but that's how they do it, you know? You know, it, you know, if you don't need to use your car, don't use your car. And a lot of the people who live in this neighborhood don't use the car because they're close to work and so on, you know, they're walking, they're using their bikes, they're using the bus system. That's the advantage of living in this neighborhood up against campus. That's why I live in that neighborhood, because I can walk and ride my bike to work and I don't have to commute, you know? And people who live there pay the price of higher density, smaller yards, no place to park, you know, multiple vehicles. You know, you pay a price for living there, but the advantage is you get to walk, you get to ride your bike, you're at work in five minutes. So, you know, and it just strikes me that it's very insulting to have somebody pay to park the car on the street and then give them a ticket because they didn't use their car. Okay? So I appreciate Heather's support of that aspect of this.
Okay. Heather, and then Dennis.
How many parking permits are issued for the Westerbanna neighborhood?
No, there's almost, usually around 550 are issued over a whole year.
And are most of those renewed every year?
Well, it's a very transient group of people because about 60% of those are purchased by people who live in the sororities, fraternities, and other certified housing, so that group is moving every few years. They're moving through there, and then there's a lot of other rentals. So, I mean, there's a group that are the same every year, those people that have lived there for a long time and don't have a place to park. But as far as the student population, you're having a change over every year.
Sure. I guess the reason I'm supportive of the people who have parking permits is they pay for them. I mean, I guess it seems like the city wants to have their cake and eat it, too. They want to charge people for these permits, and then if they don't move their car in 72 hours, they're going to charge them 15 more dollars. And I just think that that's kind of biting their noses to spite their faces, and I think that's kind of wrong to do to people who are willing to pay for a permit in the city. That's my personal opinion, and that's why I would support a motion that would not make people with permits have to move their cars for 72 hours, and because most of the time they're going to move them on a Saturday or Sunday, either to go to the grocery store, to go to church, something of that, of that nature.
I think, if I could just address that, initially, I mean, the special parking permits came into being in the late 70s, and so it's, we're seeing, you know, 30 years here going on. It's been tweaked off and on all through that. But initially, anyone who wanted to buy a permit could come and buy one and park on the street. You could live in Champagne, you could live anywhere. All you did was give us the money we gave you the permit. Well, as parking became more expensive on the U of I campus, our permit got a lot cheaper, and more and more people, instead of paying for the meter, renting a space, they'd go park on the streets, and the streets got more and more clogged all the time. Then you throw that effect into the, you know, we have there on the 800 blocks along Lincoln Avenue, a high concentration of students in the Greek houses, and they park within a block or two off. And so it's a very high concentration, and so to try and lessen those people that just bring a car, they drive it down from wherever and they don't use it, the thought was, you know, charging for the permit, too, would discourage anybody. You really didn't need to have a car down there to not bring one.
So do you not have to show proof of residency in that?
Yes, you do. You have to show proof of residency. You have to show us your vehicle registration.
Yeah. The issue here, though, of course, is because I live there and pass the same vehicles every day. You know, I can, I see the same vehicles parked in the same spots all the time. There's a pickup truck that parks in front of Mark, and I'll leave his last, Mark's house every day, and it's been there for weeks and weeks. In fact, one day, the driver didn't roll up his window, and so he got a ticket for not having a sticker to park on the street. But it was, you know, but I knew it was the same vehicle, I knew he had a sticker, and, you know, but he parks in the same spot day in, day out, yet he does use the vehicle. It's just, he doesn't use the vehicle during the day when public works wants to clean the street. He doesn't use the vehicle long enough that, you know, or it's very rare that the spots switch around. There is a gray car that parks in front of my house or across the street from my house, it parks in the same one or two spots continuously every night. That particular car, though, gets used because the guy goes to work every day, so he drives off in it, but he comes back at night and parks in the same spot. You know, the scenarios I give here are completely real and based on my experience. And so, you know, be it 72, I think 72 hours just simply is an arbitrary number that discourages energy conservation. And like I said, I think five days is, that's where I'm going, five days. Danielle has given me a really good idea, which is to put some of these ideas together, to distribute them across all the neighborhood groups, and to attach a SurveyMonkey web-based survey to this that I'll develop with Danielle and some others who have interest in it, and see what kind of feedback we get on that, and then go from there. But, you know, but there's, but there's a situation where I think that, you know, there's the power of the web. You know, we should be able to go to the web and on the city webpage and say, "I'm going to be gone this week, you know, my car's not going to move for five days, but I'll be back here. Here's contact information if somebody really does need to move my car." You know, and, you know, my sister has a key, but you shouldn't have to get out there on Wednesday night and move the car around the block just to meet the requirements of this thing to get the chalk mark off the tire.
Okay. Dennis, you had a hand up. Do you still have a comment? Dennis?
I don't know. I don't know after all this. Certainly, I think it's true that this is kind of a very specific areas question. I don't see anybody in the audience who's come to speak for it, so I'm certainly not going to move a change until I get public input from residents. Otherwise, it's just a mental thing that happens from the top down, and it doesn't seem useful. You know, I realize that nobody really owns the city's streets, you don't have a right to park necessarily. There are a lot of students who are parking, and they'd like to have long-term parking, I'm sure. I don't really think it's the job of the city to provide long-term parking on the city's streets. Permitting certainly allows a certain kind of a participation, but it's paid for. I lived in Philadelphia for three years, and if you're here is difficult, you have no concept of difficult of parking, where they required you to, you couldn't park on the right side of the street on certain days, so everybody had to move all their cars and all their parking to the left side of the street. I suppose it's because they were going to, like, clean the street or something. I never saw that happen, but nonetheless, people were out there running at three in the morning, they were trying to, remember, they'd set their alarm so they wouldn't get a ticket at five because they were trying at the last minute make a parking change? So I'm sure that this is going to require a little more thinking before we just arbitrarily do something.
Okay. Any other comments or feedback? Yeah, Delora? Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify because I think I confused Heather that, yes, a few years ago, we did change where you had to prove that you lived there. But for many years, it was anyone could get a permit until the streets had really, the streets were really clogged. Then we made you show proof of residency, and you had to live in that area to get the permit, and that's the way it is now.
Okay. Thanks. And Charlie, you had your hand up?
Well, I was going to, you know, I just wanted to point out, this item was on here for discussion, you know, and there's some motions here that were just to direct staff to develop stuff, and I appreciate that because there are some good things that staff's been asked to do, which I think is very appropriate. Danielle's given me a great idea on how to follow up with this, and so, and it looks like there's support for one aspect of this, but I won't bring that back until we're ready to maybe talk about the whole thing. So, so thank you. While I have the floor, I, you know, we've gotten this. Bill, do you know when we'll get the full report? I guess it's going to the chancellor tomorrow. Does that mean it'll be up on the web tomorrow? You don't know? Okay. Have you seen the full report or, yeah, okay. So, okay, I know where to find it. I would like, I was struck by a couple of the comments on here. It's all very interesting, you know? Of course, it addresses complete streets, which is the bicycle aspect that we've been harping on for some time, and, but I'm struck about the comments about moving the bus routes out of the core of campus. 20 years ago, the bus system in campus didn't really exist like it does today, you know, they've really expanded it. The only thing that went through was the red, green, blue, and yellow routes cut through different parts of campus, and, but now we have buses 21, 22, 24, and so on. And, you know, 20 years ago, we had more bikes on campus, a lot more bikes on campus, and, you know, you had to worry about running into another bike. It's rare that I have to worry about running into another bike when I'm out on the bike paths on campus, which is a shame. But, so, you know, it just struck me as odd that the study calls for moving those buses out of campus. With respect to resident students, I guess a couple of things here, they're talking about moving those resident student lots further out away from the dorms. But it wasn't clear to me, one question I had was, and maybe Bill knows the answers, is do they mean all students within campus as a whole, or, you know, when they refer to student lots, it wasn't clear, you know? Right now, you know, students are encouraged to park their car at FAR, or the lot, I'm sorry, to the, to the south of FAR, but the picture shows a lot south of Vet Med now. What exactly are they trying to do there? Do you know?
Really, this is conceptual. There are no specifics as to who's going where, what and why. So, you know, I mean, one thought was a free parking lot down at First and Windsor, for example, you know, so that obviously means taking transit to get to your location, and... But no, there was no specifics. The drawings here are, you know, quite conceptual, but this is, you know, this firms ideas as to how we can, you know, try to make campus safer and deal with the various modes of transit.
I guess one thing I'm interested in here, and I guess one thing I'm interested in here, and this gets back to the parking stuff, is, you know, we do have this congestion in that 800 block west up against Lincoln Avenue with the fraternities and sororities and stuff there. If, in fact, what I'd like to know is whether this, these parking lots would be available to students who don't live in dorms, for example, so that they could, instead of parking on the street, could, you know, and the bus goes right down Lincoln Avenue already, use a bus to get down to their car rather than step out of their house and save themselves $135 a year. So, you know, that's why I'm wondering about the whole study or whether you can ask that question in particular, or somebody could.
We could ask the question, certainly.
Okay, saying no for their business, this meeting starts. Thank you. Good evening.